Hello.
He's a player.
It's time.
No, no, it's been going on.
This meeting is now open for the planning board for Falmouth. First, I'd like to say first will be a public comment period, and that public comment period is for anything that's not on the agenda. So it's not if you've come to talk about something on the agenda, please wait till it comes up. If you want to talk to us about something not on the agenda, now would be the time. Is there anyone who wishes to raise an issue not on the agenda? No. Okay, then what we'd like to do now is to introduce our new Assistant Town Planner, Jed Cornock.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Would you like to say where you came from?
Sure. I'm very excited to start here in Falmouth. I spent the last 17 years or so in regional planning, working for Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, which is a regional planning agency out of Taunton. Before that was with a sister RPA. So I've done a lot of regional planning, background in master planning, bicycle and pedestrian planning, you name it, I've sort of done it. So I'm excited to learn from one of the best here that you have on staff and learn all about municipal planning. So I'm excited to be here, looking forward to working with everybody, and just really excited to get started.
Well, you are very welcome. We've waited a long time to fill that position. I'm glad that we waited and got such a well-qualified person, and that you two will make a good team, and with the other people in the planning department. So welcome to Falmouth. Now, we're going to change, oh, first, we will have the minutes.
Madam Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of June 22, 2021, as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Now, we're going to call for a public hearing, but we're going to change the order of the agenda. So I'd like to entertain a motion to change that.
I move that the Affordable Housing Committee be moved into place now.
Followed by...
Oh, well, it's going to be followed...
The vote for it.
No, we'll have to follow. I think it would be followed by the hearing on the...
Yes.
Do we vote on each one individually?
No, just, I think explanatory would be in place. It will be followed by, which we will participate.
Okay, so in case you didn't follow that, we're going to change the agenda so that the Affordable Housing Committee is going to make its presentation first, and then we're going to have the public discussion on the new proposed overlay district, beginning the public hearings on that, and then we'll go to our regular agenda. So we have a second?
Second, yep.
All in favor? Aye.
Now...
If I may, just one point of order, Madam Chairman. Could we read the hearing notice for the multifamily, just so we've kind of got the multifamily hearing open? So anything we talk about during this process will be within the realm of talking about the Affordable Housing Bylaw.
Good idea.
Because I'd just like to capture the valuable information we will likely get from these folks, just so we're trying to move things along here as best we can in multitask without messing things up.
So we're having two meetings at the same time? Is that what you're saying?
We're going to open the hearing, and we're going to hear from the Affordable Housing Committee. After their presentation, we'll get into the bylaw and the maps.
So they're all open?
Right.
Everything's on the...
And on record.
Hey, John.
Paul.
Go around.
You want to read the notice?
Oh. Multifamily bylaw hearing notice. In accordance with Section 5, Chapter 48, Massachusetts General Law, in Article 43 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, the Falmouth Planning Board shall conduct a public hearing beginning Tuesday, July 18 to 13 at 6:30 p.m. in the Selectman's Meeting Room, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, to discuss the following proposed amendment to the Falmouth zoning bylaw. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding new Article...
39, I see.
45, 49. I gotta look at my land. Article 49, mixed residential, commercial overlay district, and to amend the official zoning map by adding a mixed residential, commercial overlay district. Certain eligible locations in existing B1, B2, and business redevelopment zoning districts as shown in the document entitled Article 49 Mixed Residential Commercial Overlay District Draft 6821, and maps entitled B1, B2, and BR Zoning, dated June 24, 2021, showing proposed mixed residential and commercial overlay districts as shown below. Any further amendment, any, and further to amend the official zoning maps legend for mixed residential, commercial overlay district and Falmouth overlay districts map to refer to Article 49 of the zoning bylaws. Full text and map are available for public inspection in the Falmouth Planning Office and the Falmouth Town Clerk's Office, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. Maps and draft zoning bylaw can also be found at the planning board website at www.falmouthma.gov backslash 342 backslash planning.
Okay, thank you. If you didn't quite catch the name of the new overlay, it will come up later because we'll have a very full discussion on it. And I would like to welcome Doug Brown, who is here from the Board of Selectmen. He's taking a real interest in both of these special presentations, which is presented in August as well. Jordan.
Thank you very much for having us. In January, the Affordable Housing Committee formed a working group that was chaired by Anjali Scott Price before she had to step down because she was elected to the Select Board. The members of the working group were Pamela Harding Barrett, Mike Galasso, Karen Bissonette, Carla Ferroni, Wayne Lingafelter, and myself, Jordan Frye. And we were tasked with coming up with a list and researching this list of possible funding opportunities to address the housing crisis that we find ourselves in. And so we would like to present this list to you and receive your feedback, and take any questions, or just have a discussion with you about it. And we're looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you. Turn your around. What's up?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, members of the planning boards. Good to see everyone here in person. My name is Michael Galasso. I am not a member of the Affordable Housing Committee. I am on the Board of Directors of the Falmouth EDIC, and we find the need for affordable housing to be very important to the economic development of our community. So I participated along with the other folks that Jordan mentioned in putting together the list of potential funding sources for affordable housing for our community. As Jordan said, you know, we're, this has been an issue that's been around for many, many years. And we think now is the appropriate time for us, and I think you believe this too with your audience that you're proposing, that we really need to tackle this issue very seriously. So we can't do it without funding. So the group got together and looked at numerous funding sources that we think are appropriate. And the importance about the funding sources from our town is that we use, we meaning affordable housing developers, which I am one of, to leverage our local money with state money. To give you an example, the project that I'm doing in North Falmouth, Call McGanser Crossing, is leveraging $650,000 from the town of Falmouth with $1,003,000 from the state. That's a two-to-one leverage. So without the local contribution, we would have never gotten any of those funds. And to compete for the funds in the state, it's very important to have the local funds attributed to our projects. That gets us ahead of groups that don't, in towns that aren't able to do that. And it's what helps us leverage and bring more money to our community. So with that being said, Tom, is it just the forward one that gets me to the next slide? There we go. So we provided this to Tom, and hopefully he contributed this to you, meaning the slide presentation, and also the working paper that we put together. As Jordan said, our real intent here this evening is to get input from you, not only now, but in the future, as we move this forward. We are stopping and seeing various town committees and boards and getting their input. It's already been presented to the Falmouth EDIC and some other organizations, but we're really here to get your input as we move this forward, and hopefully to town meeting and get some positive votes. So Jordan went over who the working group is, what our tasks were, and, you know, the Housing Committee has really taken the lead in putting this group together and keeping us together. And it's been a lot of work over the last six months to come up with the report that's in front of you this evening. So the working group, our guiding principles. Most importantly was that we wanted to identify funding sources that relate to the need for the housing. So we wanted to find sources that generate revenue, that also employ lower and moderate income people. And so we wanted to make that nexus between funding sources and the need that we have in the community. So, let me see. So we evaluated the existing untapped funding sources, I just said, the existing revenue sources which may be flexible enough to be reassigned to fund affordable housing. Alignment between the sources and the potential revenue funding in the population which are most in need of robust housing. You know, we have a lot of lower-income people that work in our restaurants, our hotels, and our motels, so obviously we looked at some of those sources in order to provide some of the funding. So we targeted 4.8 million. And how we came up with that number was previously the town was providing $65,000 per affordable unit. They have recently increased that because of the increase in construction costs. As we all know, the cost of construction has escalated quite a bit. So the town has now, through the Affordable Housing Fund, agreed to borrow, let borrowers, let developers borrow up to $1,000 per, I'm sorry, $100,000 per affordable unit. So that 4.8 figure that we have really should say 7.4. Our goal is to develop 74 new affordable units per year. That's through our housing production plan. And to do that, $100,000 per unit for the local contribution, that's a need of $7,400,000. So these are the new funding sources that we've identified, that we would like to bring to town meeting in November. So we're taking it in two steps. One, identify new sources and hopefully get town meeting to approve that. And then the second phase, which we'll talk about next, is reallocation of some existing funding sources. So there's a new real estate transfer fee being proposed. It's going to require state approval in order for us to do this, and that would be a fee on the sale of homes over $1 million. It would be a 1% to 2% fee, and we estimate that that could generate $500,000 to $1,202,000 per year in revenue. The second one would be a small increase of 1%, taking the current hotel motel short-term rental tax from 5% to 6%, and 50% of that 6% going to Affordable Housing Fund. So, you know, this was a very controversial issue when we first added the local tax onto the hotel motel tax that the state has. But I don't know of anyone who doesn't go to a resort or city based upon an increase or what the hotel motel tax is. If you go to New York City, I think that tax is around 20%. So we're asking for a small 1% increase, and then that 50% of that 6% would be allocated to the Affordable Housing Fund. There's a new community impact fee that's being proposed by the state, which would require town meeting approval. And it's a 3% tax on short-term rentals, and we're proposing that all of that 3% go to the housing fund. So those are new sources that would require town meeting approval in order for us to enact and put those funds. So all the funds would go into the Affordable Housing Fund that we currently have. It's administered, and there's some members of your board that sit on that, on that committee. There's a committee that administers those funds, reviews projects, gets input from consultants and from Carla, and decide which projects they want to fund. So that's where all the money would go. So we don't need to create a new committee or a new board or anything new in order to start funding the projects. The money would go into that, into that fund and then be allocated to the projects. So the second, go on to the next slide here. So this is Phase 2. So this is reallocation of existing funds to housing. So we believe it's time for the town to put in $1 million a year out of the general fund. The Community Preservation Group has done a fabulous job funding affordable housing over the years, but they can't do it alone any longer. So we would need town meeting approval to allocate $1 million, that to go into the Affordable Housing Fund. The increase of the hotel motel tax, which we just talked about, we think would generate $500,000. So the increase and plus the allocation, both require town meeting approval. Allocating a portion of the restaurant meals tax also requires town meeting approval. And then third, and I think Mr. Fox is familiar with this, when Mr. Fox, myself, were on the EDIC, we built a solar array out at the closed landfill. That project generates over $750,000 a year to the town, at no cost to the town. The town didn't have to put any money into the project. They're saving on the electric bill every month, and also 250 low and moderate income residents in town are also benefiting from that project. So we're asking that some of the revenue that currently goes into the town's general fund be allocated towards affordable housing. There was a presentation made recently to the CPC, and they were asked to increase their allocation to 25% a year, which would generate $175,000, and they're considering that. The last item you see there is a bond issuance. When the CPC was originally formed, one of the things we did was float a bond based off of future revenue coming into CPC to buy open space. And in that time, we've bought, I don't know, probably over 300 acres of open space and spent close to $30 million in doing that. That bond was paid off from future revenue from the CPC. And what we're, what we're proposing is that we do something similar for affordable housing and create a large amount of cash that can be used to build projects. So here's our proposed timeline. June is when we came out with our plan, released to the public, represented to the Board of Selectmen, and later in June. Here we are in June and July. We're now here in July. They're presenting it to various town committees. We need to draft the warrant articles in August, come up with a final funding plan in September, and October. Hopefully, the Selectmen will issue a final warrant for the articles for the first portion, and we'd go to town meeting in November. That would be for Phase 1, and then Phase 2 would be the operating budget, because we always talk about our town budget at the April town meeting, and that's when that item will come up. So here's in conclusion, obviously, we want feedback from everyone. We don't want this to be a surprise to anyone when we get to town meeting, so we're trying to be out in the poke as much as possible. Obviously, we're here this evening, we're on the local station. There's a documentary that's being put together to talk about the need for housing in our community that will come up later, come out later this year. So we're going to continue to work with the Selectmen, with you, other folks in our community to finalize the report and hopefully be able to tackle this challenging issue that we've had in our community for an extended period of time. So that's the report on the funding sources. And I do have some comments, if you'd like me to go over those now, unless you've got some questions on this, on your proposed ordinance.
Unless anyone wants to comment now, I'd rather you go forward with your presentation.
Okay. Are we changing subjects? We're not going to talk about our ordinance, or we're going to be talking about this?
I'm not going to talk about your ordinance, if that's okay.
Oh.
Do you want to switch gears and go not talk about this anymore and switch to ours or talk about this?
No, really not. I'd rather hear the comment on this and then on the, on the new overlay, if we could.
Sure, whatever, yeah, whatever works.
They are definitely connected, but I think it'd be better to have comments on your report. A lot of time and effort has gone into it, so I'd rather hear the comments on this first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Paul.
Mr. Galasso, I think affordable housing is very important in town. I think we all agree on that, and your approach, it makes a lot of sense. So I have two, both in mind, questions. One is fairly easy to increase the tax on transfers, meals tax, et cetera. Has anyone ever done an analysis of the negative impact to that development? I've seen a lot of communities, particularly places like New Jersey, has 16, 18, 19% added on to a room tax, and it's having a negative impact. Has anything been done on, on the negative impact on increasing those taxes?
So if I understand your question correctly, Paul, is raising the taxes on those two industries, hotel motels, restaurant industry, have a negative impact on their businesses? And...
And real estate transfer taxes. You mentioned that, too.
And the real estate transfer taxes. Well, let me address the hotel motel first. I'm not aware of any particular study. It's a very good question, and maybe we need to do a little bit of research and see that to make sure that we're prepared for that question as it comes up at town meeting. Because again, I recall when we first imposed a local hotel motel tax, there was some pushback from especially the bed and breakfast places that felt that it was going to impact their business. So I think it's important for us, maybe through the Chamber of Commerce, to reach out to those businesses and explain to them what it is we're trying to do. Because on top of that, as we know, those businesses are having a tough time recruiting employees. So if we can find an answer for them to help them solve that issue that they have through this, maybe we're able to get their support. As far as the transfer tax, again, that is going to require still our folks up at Beacon Hill to approve that legislation in order to do that. And I know there's been a lot of pushback by various agencies and realtors and other folks and everything. But I think people are starting to realize the importance of, you know, folks who have been fortunate enough to own a home that's, that's over $1 million, to give back to their communities. And I think this is one way that they're able to do that. I'm sure there'll be some pushback to it, and I think we're prepared to answer that.
Thank you. I have a follow-up. The other question I had is...
Sure. Yeah, yeah, and also answer your question. So Mike, I'm sorry, Ed Curley, Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee. You and Karen Bissonette, I believe, presented this same report to the Chamber of Commerce in town and got their enthusiastic support for it. So that's, that's addressing some of your question, I think, Paul. Also, tomorrow at 3 o'clock, Wayne Lingafelter and I will be on a Zoom with Dylan Fernandez, and we're going to get a lot of advice, we hope, from him and his assistant on the real estate transfer fee idea. It's, there's at least three, maybe four other Cape Cod towns that have already moved forward with that, but it can't go anywhere until the state puts some ducks in order. And so we're going to be talking with Dylan tomorrow about that.
Paul.
One follow-up question. You mentioned in your funding source that some funding may come from EDIC solar panels. If I remember correctly, Phase 1, half the income from that project went to the town, the other half went to EDIC. Has the Board of EDIC made a decision on allocating funding from that project to affordable housing?
If I rec, if I remember correctly, and Jim might be able to help me out on this, I think that 50-50 split was only for our first three or four years, and then it switches to a different allocation, which is more favorable to the town. And we use that same formula for Phase 2. But as far as whether or not what's coming into the EDIC, if we'd be willing to allocate some of those funds to affordable housing. Right now, if you look at our budget, and you were at our meeting this morning, you know, we're at a break even really right now with the revenue that we have coming in. We're doing more work at the station. We did, just got finished doing a grant program. So it would be tough for us to allocate any of those, any of those funds, and we're doing some future projects, too. So that's why we're looking for the town to allocate some of the portion that we give them. And again, remember that it's really been a windfall for the town for what we were able to do at the landfill, where we took something that was costing the town close to $100,000 a year, that now generates about $750,000 a year to the town for the next 20 years.
Thank you.
And Jim knows because he did a lot of work in helping us put that together, analyzed 300 bills that we get each month from Eversource to determine how much we were going to be able to benefit from that.
Other board comments. Jim.
Well, I'm, in general, very enthusiastic and in favor with the overall picture. I have real reservations about Phase 1 that look to me to be all-new taxes. However, I think there's just as much energy that could be in Phase 2 and reallocation of existing. There's no reason why the CPC funds couldn't be raised from 25 to 35 or more. It should, those funds should go what the town needs most. And the other part I would like to see is, which we are trying to do, is trying to incentivize with changing in zoning to get the private industry to come and help us rebuild these things. I think if you bring this package with a lot of new taxes that you have in Phase 1, I don't think you'll get by town meeting. I think there's a lot of people that don't like new taxes I don't think we need. I think a reallocation, I think the general fund kicking in, I think the reallocation of CPC, or the taxes we already have, and put them in the right place is what we should do. I think you're going to get a lot of people objecting to the new taxes you're doing as opposed to reallocation. But I'd like to just finish up and kind of support what we're doing, is saying by trying to get private industry by changing the zoning and encouraging developers to spend the money to build what we need, is what's something I've been working on for four or five years. So I agree with the whole picture. Phase 1, a little bit disagree. Phase 2 and 3, I really think that's where you should go, and that's my thoughts.
And if I could just respond to that real quickly. So when we go and talk to the town administration, managers' office, assistant managers, finance director, they sort of say that the budget's very tight.
Yeah, they all want new money.
Budget's very tight, and we can't allocate anything that we're getting to something else. We don't want to have to lay off people. We don't want to have to, you know, repair the roads. So that's the sort of feedback. We've already talked to them about, you know, the proposal, wanted to get their input. So they're very tight about taking any money out of there.
I'm just saying with town meeting, I think, I've been suggesting, I'm not telling you what to do, but I'm suggesting you'd have an easier battle not raising new taxes and reality with town meeting. I know what the town wants to do. That's a different story.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's going to end up being a balance between the two. Hopefully, we're able to...
I've been doing this for a long time. I've seen a lot of new taxes that don't go, but we have the opportunity to reallocate some of the revenues we already have. I mean, the old windows of opportunity we used to talk about, we've paid off all this kind of debt. There's some really significant sources of funds that are available without new taxes and just reallocation. I think they sail through town meeting, and I think the other ones require home rule petitions and statewide things, and may get bogged down in something you don't have to do. But that's your choice.
Yeah, no, good. Good comments. Thank you.
Other members? John?
Yes, looking at what you have here is terrific, but I think that if you can get a bond approved and passed, you're talking about $25 million, it would be paid off through CPC funding, which would not cause any pain to any new, any new taxes. It already exists. The money's coming in every year, and I think that would be your easiest way. And if you did get $25 million of funding, using $100,000 per unit for each new unit, it could help fund 250 new units over a period of time. It looks to me that that would be the least painful avenue.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why we put it on the list. One of the feedback we get back, we get from that, John, is that, how do you do that without identifying the projects where that money going to go? So some folks have told us, we can't issue a bond without knowing what the projects are going to be. I'm not a believer of that, but that's some of the feedback we get. So we would need to have identified a group of projects that would require those type of funds in order to float the bond. The EDIC has the ability to issue bonds, and that's one avenue that we could go to, but we have to identify the repayment source. My thought is, just like you just said, if we have a repayment source, which is the CPC, then why would we need to have to identify all the projects? I'm not sure they identified all the land they were going to buy when they floated the bond for, for buying all the open space. But I've heard that they did, and that's why they were able to do it. So there's still a lot of discussion about it, but total agreement, and I think a lot of people in the working group believe that doing the bond would be one way to quickly help solve the issue that we have. So we continue to investigate that, talk to some bond councils, and find out what we would have to do.
I too would like to speak for the bond. I can remember one, John Druley, what was it, John, three years ago? The Board of Selectmen was having a hearing about affordable housing, one more hearing, and a great deal was said about affordable housing. It was the greatest need in town. We need to do something about it. It was the greatest need in town, we need to do something about it. No money was put forward, and at the end of the hearing, John stood up and said, we know how to do things in this town when we want to. Look at what we've done with open space, just look at it. All that land was not identified, and it would be easy to do. All you need is a GIS map of the town and look for the empty spaces. So what kind of an exercise is that? Whereas with this, there's an issue, it's actually similar. Where are you going to put these? Where are the, how is the development going to go forward? It would have to be more concrete, but there's no doubt, at least in my mind, that the town has the capacity to bond it, and it's whether or not it has the will to do it. If this is our greatest need, that is our best way to do it, I think. And speaking as a town meeting member, taxes of course aren't the purview of this board, but as a town meeting member, I believe it's enough of an issue that I certainly would vote for an increase in taxes, and I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that no one else would. It might be, maybe not.
I'm just saying to be easier.
Oh, easy. So, Michael, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
We're targeting four point eight million a year. That's a lot of money to spend. How, how can you know that you would be able to do that?
It's a very good question. You know, part of it is up to you and what you're doing next on your agenda, which is changing some of the zoning that would allow this type of development to occur without always having to go to the ZBA for every project that we do. So I think it's a, a project for both of us to do, and that's why we're here this evening. I think we need to be partners in this as we move forward, because we will have to find places to put it. And that's not an easy thing to do.
Right, it's not. So thank you. And of course, we are partners. Pat, who chaired the Long Range Comprehensive Planning Committee over time, as you know, this is very strongly supported in that plan. Carla, who wrote the plan that we're all trying to, to implement, I mean, there's a lot of support for the planning and for moving it forward, certainly on this board. Pam?
Well, I think one of the first things we have to do is we're going to have to educate the community, because there are many, many folks in town that have no idea what affordable housing is. And as soon as you say affordable housing, the first concept that comes to mind for them is homeless shelters or homeless housing. I think we have our, our work cut out for us in educating as to what, not just what we want to do, but all about affordable housing and who that, it's our police, our police, our fire, nurses, teachers, who can't afford to live here. And so I think once we get that groundwork for educating, I think it's much easier when you understand what the town is going to try to do, because some of the financing is above what people even want to think about. This is what we need, how are you going to get us there? And at what sacrifice to us?
Well, and then who will be living there? I think you're right about that issue. Bob, did you want to say something?
Oh, good.
Oh, okay.
If I just, go ahead, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to Pam's question, because I think that's a great point. The committee's also working on a, a real public education campaign that includes this documentary that we're working on, but it also includes, we were just having some meetings with Bill Huff about how to run an actual campaign to get people educated about the issue before they show up at town meeting and need to vote. Because if we're actually going to do something about this, it takes the whole community knowing about it. And also, Charlotte, I wanted to address your question, that, what you asked right before, and say that our next step is actually to begin coming up with an implementation plan. So we're aware of the fact that we can't just go ask for this money and have no, no plan for what we're going to do with it. So that's going to be our, our, our work moving forward.
Are there other members of the public who would like to comment? Carla?
Hi, everyone. Is this working tonight?
I think so, yeah.
Madam Chairman, I'm Carla Froney, the Falmouth Housing Coordinator, and I would just like to talk with you for a brief minute about the amount of funds that have come into the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund that I administer. Up until this point, virtually all the funds have been Community Preservation Act. And the CPC has been really great about adding money every year. They keep adding money and giving us more. And town meeting just voted to give us one point eight three million. And the question comes up, well, what are you going to do with that money? I'll say to you now, I already have an application on my desk that will spend all of that money. So it's kind of a chicken and an egg, where you say, well, if we give you the money, how are you going to spend it? But then developers will say to me, I want to do a project, do you have any money? So I am confident that we can utilize all of that money for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Mike?
One of the worst professional reviews I ever received was from the town of Falmouth on an affordable housing project on Scranton Avenue. So I look at it as that the people that drove that are still working for the town. It seems to me the town leader should make it very explicit that these projects should be held to a good standard, but some of the things I've seen. Now, for example, I just presented a project in Bastel, we got it approved in one night, and I got an attaboy from the planning board and also from the affordable housing people that my client was working with. I've never got an attaboy from this town. So we, I, I gotta tell you something. I call Massachusetts, we used to be the creator of freedom, and now we're the creator of bureaucracy. And I tell you what, we should be focusing on getting things done appropriately, and sometimes it seems the people want to, apparently the book of regulations is sometimes more important than people. So anyways, I think you get my message loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I think I know the comment that you're referring to, and I want to say I'm sorry if I hurt your feelings.
No, you didn't. It's nothing you guys did. Trust me.
Any other comments?
After that?
You don't want to become the universal apologist. I want to thank you very much, Anne, for, oh, yes.
Just a question, if I might.
Please come on.
What's the definition of affordable housing?
You need to come to the front.
You need to come. I rest my case. I rest my case.
I'm Mrs. Bellmore from Saddleback Lane. Just a question. I'd like somebody to tell me, when you're, in your definition of affordable housing, what are you talking about? And, and that could overcome what Pam was talking about, people thinking that it's for homeless or people that can't afford any home. I think that's the biggest education point you have to get out to the public.
Possibly, I think you're, you're probably right. I'm going to ask Carla to answer that, because I believe the state provides the answer.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone, back again. So affordable housing has many definitions, and it's depending on which regulatory agency is using the definition. I see Jed smiling at this. So we use the HUD guideline for the area median income. Affordable housing is to house people whose incomes are up to eighty percent of the area median income. So HUD updates that income levels every year. And the income level now for a family of four, eighty percent of median, it might be around ninety thousand-ish. Yeah, it's pretty high. So if you think about a family of four earning ninety thousand dollars, who is that family? That's beyond what a fireman earns. It's, it could be beyond what a teacher earns. You need to have two incomes in that household to meet that guideline. So affordable housing is eighty percent of that area median income. Now, we also can look at lower numbers of the area median income, and we get to like low and moderate median income. So low income is thirty percent of the area median income, up to sixty percent of the area median income. Now, the folks who earn that income might be somebody on social security, or it might be somebody who works in retail, or somebody who is your restaurant server. And those are the folks at that level of income. They are all considered affordable. What I want to raise to you, and I will raise later tonight in conversation about your bylaw, is what happens after the eighty percent of area median income? Who are those folks who earn more than eighty percent of the area median income but still can't afford to buy a house here? Over eighty percent is not considered affordable by the definition, but we know that people who earn between eighty percent and a hundred percent of the area median income still can't afford to buy a house here. So we'll look also at that level of income that is not considered affordable by the state. However, you can use up to a hundred percent of Community Preservation Act money to develop housing units for that income level.
I've got a question for Carla. You gave a face to the eighty percent by saying ninety K, which didn't give a face to the thirty to sixty. Can you put a dollar figure on that for what it currently is now? Because I think that's going to be, when you said it's the clerks, it's the, these are the people that we desperately need in our everyday lives.
These are the people who take care of us.
Yeah.
Who wait on us when we go to a restaurant, who take care of us when we're at home and we need help and we need a personal care attendant or assistant to help us at home. And the fact of the matter is, these folks can't afford to live here. And as Falmouth continues to have people of higher levels of income coming to retire, the fact is that their caregivers won't be able to live here. They'll have to cross the bridge and live in other towns on the other side of the bridge and travel here to help us. So I think that's something really important, especially as we look at the demographics of the town of Falmouth and see how we're an aging population.
Carla, how does this apply to rental housing? Not everyone wants to own a house, not everybody really can afford to. How does any of this apply to, if we were to have affordable housing and it were for rent, how do those income levels apply? If it were rental housing, and you wanted to be on the subsidized housing inventory, how does that work?
Yes, so that's a good question. And affordable housing income levels are the same for a rental and for ownership. So they're the same. And like you say, not everybody wants to own. So eighty percent of the area median income going towards your rental, we usually like to see as a guideline thirty percent of your income being used towards your housing. And we already know that many more people in town than, I don't know if it's forty or fifty percent, use more than thirty percent of their income towards housing, whether it be rental income or a rental home or a homeownership home.
And as people apply to go into affordable housing units, are they rank ordered according to need? So that you would be, you would have to be giving most of your rentals to the lowest income and then working your way up, or as they come in? How does that work?
So when any development comes in, and it's going to go on the SHI, the subsidized housing inventory, the income levels are already predetermined, and they're associated with the rental levels. So we say somebody at eighty percent of the area median income can afford eight hundred and fifty dollars a month on their rental home. So they're all merged together and considered, and the state looks at them, the state determines those levels and makes sure that we meet those levels. So if a developer comes in and says, well, we're going to create affordable housing, and it's going to be for people who have eighty percent of the area median income, there's a calculation and a formula that goes on and determines at eighty percent of the area median income, what can that family afford? That's how it's determined.
Jim?
Just because I've done this a little bit, I think you're seeing, you talked about allocation as to need. What they do, if you qualify at the eighty percent, you get in the auction, and they're all equal once, once, once it comes in. So in this case, there isn't an allocation, but I believe if you're doing low-income housing tax credits and developers do another source of funding, then they do allocate more money for the, the people more in need. But the first part, just making it affordable, is once they, they get a lottery, they qualify, they get approved by a hack or somebody, and everyone's equal once they get in.
And how long is that waiting list now?
Well, you know, different entities in towns have different waiting lists. The Falmouth Housing Authority has their waiting list, Falmouth Housing Corp. has their waiting list, we have a ready renters list that's managed by Yarmouth. So, you know, what I can say about that, and Jim, thanks for bringing that up, you're absolutely correct. To get to people whose incomes are thirty or sixty percent of the area median income, the CPC money here can't do that alone. So you have to have a developer with a larger development, and they have to seek additional subsidies from the state. So there's a couple of different state programs, and like Jim mentioned, the low-income housing tax credits. Once you get the tax credits, you can usually support somebody whose income is at thirty percent, which is somebody on social security or general relief.
Okay, could I just see if we could get somewhere to a clearer picture? Because I realize it's a really complicated answer to Mrs. Bellmore's question, and I'm trying to educate people and to see how complicated it is, just to boil it down in their minds. We have recently, I think Spring Bars is all rented out now, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
And what is sort of the mix of people who turned out to go into the Spring Bars, which is the most recent affordable housing project that we had?
Well, Spring Bars had a couple of units at thirty percent, a couple at sixty percent, and then the majority was at eighty percent. We also have rentals at Brickhill Place, those were all eighty percent. We have rentals at Gifford Workforce One, Gifford Workforce Two, and these have all come on board since I've been here since 2017. And they primarily go for the eighty percent of the area median income. If you get a large development like Spring Bars, you know, forty units or larger, that's when you can access additional subsidies from the state, and then you can support people whose incomes are lower at the thirty or sixty percent range.
John?
So Carla, for two people, eighty percent, what would they pay for rent? For a month?
Well, that's a good question. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head.
I think that's what we're trying to get to, but wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be somewhere around twelve hundred dollars a month, thirteen hundred?
It would be around there. HUD just revised them and came out with them recently, and I haven't studied them.
So that's what the property owner could expect for rent? But if, if it's a market rate rent, it could be fifteen, eighteen, two thousand a month.
Right, for, you know, especially like a two-bedroom, we see eighteen hundred a month for a two-bedroom on the market.
So these are mostly working people who are there?
Where, Charlotte?
At Spring Bars, they're mostly working people?
At Spring Bars, there are some units for thirty percent area income, just a couple, a few more at sixty percent, but the majority is eighty percent, which means somebody has a, has a steady employment.
So are you saying people at thirty percent tend not to have steady employment? There'll be elderly people on social security?
Well, I can't say definitively who they might be, but when we look at thirty percent of the area median income, we know they're people who probably don't have a full-time job.
Okay. Just would like people to be able to get a picture of who their neighbors would be. I think that people, that's really, when they ask that question, that's really what they want to know. John?
So I know in, in some cases, people are on disability, social security... social security disability. They'll pay thirty percent of their monthly income. So if they're getting nine hundred dollars a month, three hundred a month is what they pay for rent. And the property owner makes up the difference. So it's a huge subsidy.
It is.
And that's why, at that level, it's the nonprofits that are building those types of housing.
It is the nonprofits. And it has to be a larger development so that you can access those state subsidy layers.
The Housing Assistance Corporation gave a series of seminars for planners. Doug, I think you went to some of them, didn't you? They were held over at the Nashby Library. They're really interesting. They got in a lot of, yeah, developers to come. One segment was hearing from developers. What would it take to get a developer to come and make it a private project? So it might not need either any subsidy or much of a subsidy. And they were all pretty exact in their answers. They said it had to be twenty units an acre or more. And right now, Falmouth's limit is six units an acre and you need a special permit to even get that. So that's where we start. You need a special permit for six units per acre, but you can have the six units. But there's no way really you can get the twenty units per acre a developer needs without a forty B.
Well, that's where your overlay district comes in.
Yeah.
Should we move back to the regular agenda? Or just, because I didn't make the motion that to move it out of order and incorporate it in?
Oh.
I thought that's what we did.
Well, that was the intent, but I didn't state it the same way.
Let's let Mike sum up, and then we will.
I just, again, I just wanted to thank you all for taking the time tonight and discussing this with us because we think it's a very important issue. We love to get your feedback and to continue the discussion with you, whether through Tom and Ed, Carla, to see what we can do to tackle this issue that's very important to us. And just a couple of comments, sort of what Carla was saying. Most of the federal programs over the years for affordable housing have been geared to folks who make between thirty and sixty, maybe eighty percent. That's where all the money is. And as you know, that's where developers go, is where the money is. So those are the majority of the units that have been built. Not so much here in this community, except for some of the ones that the housing corporation have done on Main Street and Spring Park Road, because those were funded with low-income housing tax credits, which require a certain percentage of the units to be at thirty and sixty percent. The toughest group to house is that sort of middle-income group. Because there haven't been a lot of programs that would help subsidize the cost for those type of projects. So we're starting to see more programs. The state has some programs, workforce housing programs, that help with the cost and providing housing for that group. But that's been the hardest group to help house.
To get any assistance for. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all the effort you've put into getting this far and for coming to speak to us about it. Of course, we'd be really happy to partner with you to see how much further we can go with this until we actually have more units for people to live in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Jordan, I have to say one last thing. You asked a really good question, which is that people are kind of wondering who their neighbor might be. So I just wanted to say that I work full-time and I make fifteen dollars an hour. So I might be your neighbor if it was a thirty percent of median income unit. So, if anyone is wondering.
Does your face on it?
That's the face on it, the monetary face on it. And the professional face on it. So that's the kind of thing we need. And you know, I would like to, I think, amend my motion that we voted on to take them out of order, which was fine, but I should have added and incorporate them into the town meeting article discussion.
Which will start now.
Which we will start now. But we need a vote for the amendment to moving it out of order.
Is there a second? A move?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so let's move now. We're going on to an article that...
Please, sir.
I was a no.
You were a no?
Yeah. I think, I'd like to move on to the other, the public hearings. Because I hate to keep people waiting. I mean, it's one thing for us to have a discussion about things, but...
Well, this is a public hearing.
But I was outvoted, so, you know.
And the people who are bringing site plans, they were notified where they might be a bit late. So we're now going to move to town meeting, proposed mixed residential and commercial overlay district, which I think probably everyone here has some familiarity with and we're going to learn more now. First, we hear from Tom, the town planner, who's worked very hard on this. And then from John Drooly, who chaired the subcommittee, myself and Jim, who pulled it together. And we worked, we had a number of people helping us. I want to thank them, particularly Eric Turkington. Others have been readers for us, so it's had quite a bit of value so far. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Bottom, the town planner here in Falmouth, Mass. And what I've got on the screen, and we're not going to stay on this for very long because you can't read any text on the screen. But this is the bylaw that's been proposed, the overlay, the multifamily bylaw that has proposed. And you can find this, not just at the town clerk's office, but on our website as well. And in the bylaw itself, you can click on this link. It'll take you to our website. Where you'll find all the maps and everything else that we put together for this. So with that, I should have made who just said it. You can just click on it. It'll take you to the website and you'll find, here on our website, right here underneath the calendar, there's a copy of the zoning bylaw. So for the folks who are watching at home, you can click away and you can find the small print of what we're talking about. And with that, I'll turn it over to John Drooly, who's really done the work. The committee's done the work, as I've talked about before. I really liked to have been a lot more engaged in this, but we're at the point we're at now. The good news is, is our newest member of the team, Judd Cornoch, has looked at a lot of bylaws and helped a lot of communities with a lot of bylaws. So it will be great to have a fresh set of eyes to look at these things and suggest things and comment on things that might be apropos to the bylaw. So with that, turn it over to John and then we'll come back and look at maps as we talked about before, if that's fine with you guys.
Right, and then we will have comment from the public, which I'm really interested in hearing, what your reactions are and what you might like to see change. Because that's the point of a public hearing, is to get some input. This isn't cast in concrete. It's open now for change in hopes that we do get to the town meeting in November. John?
Thank you. I just want to start off by saying that about three, three and a half years ago, I went to Tom and expressed some interest in trying to create an apartment bylaw for the town of Falmouth. Because I couldn't understand why we didn't have hardly any apartments. And he explained to me how difficult it is in Commonwealth of Mass to have an apartment bylaw. In fact, you can't have an apartment bylaw. So after he explained it to me, I met with Carla and housing coordinator. And she started steering me in the direction of some people in Boston I spoke with. And then I met with Pat and Pat formed the subcommittee. And so I want to thank Charlotte. I want to thank Jim because we've put a lot of time into this. And I also want to thank the rest of our board here because you've been very supportive and very helpful. And I just, I don't want to read the whole thing. I'm not going to read the whole thing. But I want to mention a couple of things that I think that are really important here with this bylaw. One is that we're going to have density where the community wants to have density and not where it's going to be forced upon us by a forty B. Secondly, we're going to have increased density that doesn't require any financial subsidy from the town of Falmouth. We took a lot of testimony this evening about affordable housing and whether it's supported with a hundred thousand dollars a unit or more, or get state subsidies. But if this bylaw gets enacted and gets used, there won't be any financial subsidies required for any of these developments. And then third, I think that was it.
I write.
Yeah, by right.
I write.
Well, we're not going to get exactly. It's going to be a by right. But I just want, the town's going to have density where it wants to have density as a community. And we're not going to, it's not going to require any financial subsidies. The increased density will be the developer or property owner's only subsidy.
On our committee, because I'm not a developer and I don't really have a full understanding of it, John had to unpack that for me. Well, how come that works that way? Because if you can have twenty units per acre, picture that, then you're going to be getting enough money from the units to pay for you to put up the project. The project pays for itself. It's actually economically feasible. This is what developers told us would work. John himself has gone over the numbers and knows them well. Jim knows them well. Others have looked at them. Developers are interested in doing this because it would pay them to do it. And when John says this could be where people want density, we're proposing this overlay district only for those districts that are currently zoned for business. Business One and Business Two and Business Redevelopment, and not quite all of those. We're excluding the business district that's up on Route 151 because it's on the aquifer and excluding the business district that is in Woods Hole because it has coastal problems, but because it's an historic district. Those aren't included. So this doesn't affect Woods Hole. It doesn't include the 151 corridor and the conservation lands up there. If you picture where the business districts are, that's downtown, all the way down from the, I believe it starts at the edge of the green and goes Business One, turns to Business Development, going through Gus Canty, turns into Business Two, going past Friendly's, all the way up to Stop &amp; Shop Corner and beyond, and includes the back of Worcester Court, some of the backland off of the Davis Straits area and where Walmart's is now. That's all Business Two land. And then at the end of each peninsula in town that goes out past the ponds, the thinking when those businesses were created is that someone who lived out there wouldn't have to go downtown to get milk and bread. They could get it right at the end of their road. So there's a little business district in Titek and in Davisville and McCoit. Those, that's where it would apply, only in business districts, not somewhere else. Doesn't include Business Three. There are business zones along Old Main Street and North Falmouth, but they're Business Three. So those aren't included either. There are little bits of business things on Route 28 in North, 28A in North Falmouth also. So that's where it would be. So when John says it's where people would want it to be, that's where you expected to find commercial developments. Jim?
Just only one addition. All these locations are either on the sewer now or in the sewer that we're planning in the future and they have public transportation. That is the real key. You can't build, and at least in my opinion, affordable housing where everyone is five miles from downtown and they all have to have a car. Because then you have to build new infrastructure for them. If you build it with the infrastructure that's already there. And we've spent eighty million dollars between our water purification and our sewers to protect our embayments. And by building these on areas that are on the sewer, we're staying with that plan. And that's when we considered this very carefully, where areas where the sewer is either already there or will be in their future. Because to keep Falmouth the way we like it with the ponds and our embayments without turning them into what they became in the eighties sometimes, it's changed the whole town. So we take, I mean, really making the public transportation in the sewer was a huge input to what we're on our choices.
Yeah. And something that I think we need to wrap our heads around when we talk about twenty units per acre, everybody thinks twenty houses on an acre, wow, that's an awful lot. But we're looking at units, could be a one-bedroom unit, two-bedroom unit. And I always use the example of Oddfellows Hall, which if you equate it to twenty units per acre, that's twenty acres per, twenty units per acre, but it's only four units because it's such a small parcel. So there is a proportionality to it that I think people have to understand.
But there's also a scale to it. None of the units would be three stories high. That's too tall. They would be only two and three-quarters stories high. So that's a two-story building with dormers is what that amounts to. And you've seen other buildings like that in town. We're going to, I see your hand. I'm not ignoring you, but we're just going to follow our pattern of, first of all...
That would be helpful. A graphic that we all see would be helpful.
Oh, that's true. Tom, I know you have one map that shows just the business plan. So we're not looking at the back part of the maps, just the business, the overview. That big red thing you're looking at at the top, that's excluded. That's on 151.
So we have, this is the big picture map. And following the big picture map, we have twelve other maps. Each of these areas that drills in on them. So we're going, this is, just for the purposes of where these areas are generally located at, this is the first map. And so we're going to... Yes, where those areas that are proposed at. So we're going to drill down into those with twelve additional maps to get down to, you can see the individual parcels and the buildings that are set on them presently. So bear with us and we'll have those maps up for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does that help? Good. Because I think there are a couple of more points that we really need to make before we open it up for general comment. One is, well, what would this look like, really? And we started on that from the scale. But it, we would like to keep them so that, you know, 704 Main Street, very handsome development, very, very much so. The housing that's up beyond Stop &amp; Shop, very, very good-looking. That would all fit into this kind of a thing. So that's what they would look like and it would be by, or similar. And it would be by right. So that a developer wouldn't have to go through a process to get variances from the ZBA. They would need to come to us with a site plan for what they're planning to do and meet all the requirements for a site plan that has to do with appearances and uses and road cuts and all of that. But not to get a variance because it would allow by right the twenty, the twenty units per acre and the various setbacks that are in the details that are here. So it's all laid out. Part of that is to entice the developers John was talking about, that they know they don't have to go through a long and uncertain process. One. The other, the other part of that is that we would know what they're going to do. It's faster. It would be a streamlined process just because it's by right that they have to follow these rules. And they would, for each of them, in fact, John, I wonder if you could speak about it, there would be, we are hoping there are mostly going to be rental units. Some ownership, some rental, but leaning toward rental because that's really what the town needs. We've, we've supported a lot of one-by-one housing for low income, but not rentals. And that's what we need to do. So on the affordability requirements, John, you want to talk about what we're proposing?
Sure. What was proposed is twenty-five percent of the rental units would be for affordability, deed restricted. And seventy-five percent would be market rate. And by doing it that way, all of the units would count toward the town's ten percent subsidized housing inventory. So that's the plan. And, you know, we meet with the selectmen every year and every year they say, "We need affordable housing." When is planning, we're going to do something about it. So this is kind of what we've come up with. But because we can't just have a rental bylaw, we also included similar for sale units. So if you're going to do a development with for-sale units, fifty percent have to be affordable. Fifty percent could be market rate. And so we think as a board that hardly anybody would do this because it really won't be profitable enough to do it. So we're trying to dissuade that. We have to have it as part of the bylaw, but we're trying to dissuade that with the not very profitable. And so we think everything will be rentals. And also, this is a mixed use. So we're looking for developments where the first floor is stores or offices and then the apartments would be on the second floor or second, you know, two and a half stories. And we're also looking at redevelopment, not just new construction, redevelopment. And an example would be a small plaza, like, let's take East Falmouth. Everybody knows where Family Foods is, right next door. There's a little plaza there. I think it's got four stores, a laundromat. I think it's got four stores, a laund- laundromat. So some in the future could maybe purchase that and tear it down and rebuild it, come in front of the board with, with nice drawings and meet our parking guidelines, meet our size guidelines and have first floor for shopping, second floor apartments. You might get four apartments there. And one would have to be affordable, three would have, would be market rate. But the whole, the whole parcel would be redeveloped and made much nicer, I shouldn't say it, more modern than it looks right now. And that's what we're looking to do at McCoit, East Falmouth, North Falmouth, you know, you see the parcels here. And we're gonna go through the process of some of these parcels will be eliminated. And we're gonna come down to what we think are the best, best places to have this kind of development. And, and we don't think there's very many places, we haven't finished it up, the maps yet, but there aren't a lot of places where you're gonna get 20 units. Most of these would be much smaller, but it'd be 20 per acre. So if you have a half acre, you could do 10, but you might only be able to get eight on the parcel. So, but we wanna make the town look better in the future and we want to create the opportunity to have rental housing.
Jim?
Yeah, just to point out, we, when Falmouth created our zoning, you know, we created one and two-acre zoning because we really didn't want to have apartments. We wanted to have great big lots and that's what created our housing crisis. We did it to ourselves. And the fact that if you look at our B2 zoning with six units per acre, I've done some math calculations and I've got a presentation called Density Done Right. If you look at it and you take our lot coverage ratios of 40% for the building and, and for parking, by the time you build them out, your residential units, because you can only put in six per acre, you end up with 2,000 square foot units. And it's just totally impractical to have rental units that 2,000 square feet. But that's what our zoning did. We did it to ourselves. And in order to make it work, we have to make those units smaller. And that's why we've come up with this 20 units per acre. We're not saying it has to be 20, but let the developers figure it out for themselves. They know what the 20 units per acre, they can decide what they want, make it work financially, make 25% of them affordable. They could keep the money on the 75% and find a way to build rental units is what we need. And that's, our existing zoning, if you try to build it out, it comes out at 2,000 square feet per unit. We have some buildings on Main Street that are on 20,000 square foot lots and they have three floors and they can only have two units in the, they can have four units in the whole thing, or, yeah, three units in the whole thing because it's six units per acre. It's crazy. They have, we have buildings with two floors, 8,000 square feet of vacant space because they can't do anything with it because our zoning doesn't work. And that's what, that's what, it's a mathematical thing that we've been working on. I know people are afraid of the 20 units per acre, but we're just saying, let the developers figure it out. And they all, and our hearings and talk to people, we've been encouraged to, to give them the 20 units and let them come up with something that meets all our other criteria under that. So that's, our zoning does not work the way it is. We have to change it.
So you can see that we're fond of this. I wonder what you would have to say about it. Would anyone like to start the comments on it? Doug?
Hello, Doug Brown. I'm current select board chair. So I'm really glad you guys are coming up with this. That's really timely. One thing I'd like to say is, I noticed in the language it said that the affordable units should be affordable either in perpetuity or to the maximum allowable by law. So I'd like it to be in perpetuity only. That's one comment. Another would be that in sewer areas, I don't think we should hold the applicant to the Title V requirement. It's just not practical because we have Main Street where we know there's gonna be places where people can't come up with it. Okay, that's not part of it?
No, Title, no, Title V doesn't apply on the sewer. They could, they don't need it.
Why do we still do it at the select board meetings?
It's the allocation of the existing sewer because we don't have the right discharge. It has nothing to do with our capacity. It's we don't have the ability to discharge. So you're allocating the discharge part for it. But as soon as we solve, I think, I believe it's that $80 million problem and we do a discharge, then we, then our sewer plant can handle it.
As, as long as it's not a hindrance.
No, it's, it's-
And then the last-
We're handcuffed because we cannot discharge anymore under the, when we borrowed the money under the one percent-
I understand that part, but I'm just saying, as long as that's not part of this-
No, it isn't.
Okay.
I saw your comments, but that's not, we're not limiting it at all. We're just dealing with the state rules we already have till you guys solve the discharge problem.
All right. Working on it. And then the third one is in downtown, we know we have parking problems and we know that we have these properties that Jim referred to. I mean, I don't know exactly what properties they are, but I suspect that there are properties that won't be able to meet the parking requirements either. So I hope you consider getting rid of that or at least making an available variance or some kind of a way to get around that so we don't lose the opportunity to do these Main Street properties.
I think you'll see that the language proposed is flexible.
Okay.
So that if a developer comes with a proposal, they can make an arrangement with nearby parking for use of that. They can propose a way to solve their parking problem or we can be flexible in what we allow.
It would be nice even if you could waive it because like, a lot of the young people live in the cities don't have cars because they don't need them. And you really wouldn't need one here. You could walk to the store or walk to wherever you need to get to go or get on the bus.
I think we're anticipating in Davis Straits, there'll be a lot of people who are walking to work.
Right.
And walking to, to buy their food, that walking will be one of the ways people are getting around and it will be attractive while they walk.
Then the other thing, I wonder if the mixed use will, how will that be really, will the whole first floor have to be business?
No.
So there's flexibility there too.
This is how cities used to be built.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And that's, you've seen all, all sorts of districts in Boston say that are townhouses and a store on the corner, dentist's office in one building, a doctor in the next, whatever. They're mixed.
So there may be housing on the first floor.
Exactly.
Or in the basement, if it was on the side of a hill. Just wanted to point out on Main Street, I think if you look at where Eastman's is, that's about a half acre lot, they have 10 units on the second floor.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, that's what we built before we had zoning. When we put zoning in, they said, okay, no more 10 units on a half acre, it could only be three. So we did it to ourselves by creating the zoning. We stopped what we had, a beautiful village being built by entrepreneurs and just building what the town needed and what they wanted. And we put this artificial zoning set that's, that came in. It said, no, you can't do that anymore. You can only put three units there. And that's what we get as we go further around. So it's something that we created, did it to ourselves, and we're just trying to unhandcuff ourselves from the, those zoning rules. I mean, just go walk on this building downtown and you can literally see, what is it, one through 11 units on the second floor on the Eastman block. It's, it's, it's an old building, it's got apartments, people walk to work, they don't, you know, they ride the bu, the bus stops and picks them up, goes all the way to P-Town or Hyannis or to Woods Hole. We did it to ourselves with the zoning. It's broken, it's gotta be fixed.
I agree. I like the 50% on the purchase too. That's good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to point out, that's, John came up with that. It's because the state law doesn't let you say that it has to be apartments.
Right.
So we came up with a financial way to make it uneconomical if you didn't make it apartments. It's, that was a creation.
As, as a correction, Mr. Turkington came up with that idea.
Through you. I mean, we heard it, but, we had a lot of back and forth, but that's, that's, you're right. It was, you were telling us we couldn't do it until, unless we did this and we found a way. And it makes it uneconomical. No developer will want to make it 50% affordable. They can't make any money. But if they keep it as a rental unit and they can charge 2,000, I've heard buildings on Main Street now renting for $3,000 in this market for a two-bedroom apartment. It's crazy.
Let's have more public comment. Michael?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael Galasso, Falmouth EDIC. And I, I think you've done a great job in putting together this draft and I'd like to offer some, some comments that I, that I hope will improve it. So one type of housing that I'm not sure is permitted under your definition of multifamily dwelling would be small SRO units, or micro units, 300 to 450 square feet. I'm not sure that, I had a hard time understanding your definition of multifamily dwelling. Those type of units could really help provide housing for single workforce people in our community. Smaller, people call them micro units. I call them SROs because that's what I built many in San Diego. But I think if we could have that as an allowed use, that would, that would be help. Also, if I understand-
What do you mean studio, Michael?
Pardon me?
Does that mean studio?
Single room occupancy. SRO is single room occupancy. The Falmouth Hotel down here at the corner of Shore Street is an SRO.
Thank you.
So, the other thing that I think impacts the ability to lease to seasonal workers is a requirement that you have a minimum one-year lease. You might want to have that for the restricted units, the affordable units, but the other ones, I would rather not have that. Those seasonal workers are here for six or nine months. If we require that, everyone has to have a one-year lease, that would eliminate the ability to lease to them. And I think those, that's a population we want to serve. I'm wondering why you used density of 20 units per acre versus a floor area ratio, mostly in, in commercial and mixed-use areas? Density is controlled by floor area ratio. And as Jim has said, then you let the developer determine what he wants to put in that floor area. So for instance, if we had a floor area of four and you had a 10,000 square foot lot, you'd be able to build 40,000 square feet. And the developer would need to determine how many units you'd get on there. So I'm just wondering typically from a planning standpoint, in commercial districts, you see density controlled by floor area ratios?
I can answer that question.
Okay.
We talked about that quite a bit. It's really opaque. People just don't understand it.
No.
And we'd like this to be as understandable as possible, as clear as possible, in hopes that it will get passed and it will get built. It has the same effect, so we went with the, the more understandable language.
Doug had mentioned, you know, uses on the ground floor. I think in some areas, you may not want to permit some ground floor uses. For instance, as you have a Main Street that's very active and all of a sudden you've got a bank that's closed, or you've got a dentist office that's closed, it really kills that continuity of a good long stretch on a Main Street. So you may want to look at some areas where you may not want to have certain types of ground, ground floor uses, especially in our downtown area. I don't think we need any more banks anyways, but typically banks on a ground floor creates nothing in the, especially in the evening because they're limited hours. So you may want to look at that. And in other areas, what we've done where maybe the retail isn't as strong as it would be for a market to go in there, some sort of retail use, is to allow, you know, studio art space, live-work spaces on the ground floor. There's some building code issues associated with that, but that really helps attract an artist. They like to have tall ceilings and, you know, being able to have a live-work artist space on the ground floor would help some of those mixed use. The other thing is that, you know, there are a number of historic buildings in these districts. Will those people be able to transfer this new benefit that they're getting onto other properties? Because they're not able to redevelop their property because they got a historic building. So being able to transfer that development right, and I know we've talked about transferring development right for historic buildings, would give these people who have historic buildings the same benefit as their neighbor next door who maybe doesn't. I would, in talking to a number of, of local architects, really, really encourage you to come up with design guidelines. Yes, you pointed out two good projects that have been done, but we have many more that were not done very well. There is one great three-story mixed-use project in downtown Egerton, which is probably one of the best examples I've seen of a two-and-a-half story, you know, mixed-use building in an urban area that's been done. But I think we need to have design guidelines. I really do. I really would encourage you to do that. You know, these zones are in most visible part of our community. We want to make sure they're done well. And I don't think we can just leave it to developers. There are good developers who do things well and ones that don't. But I think we need good design lines that show examples, not just setbacks and so on, but show examples of what we want to see.
We do so agree with you. And we approve design guidelines and are waiting to be, to have them illustrated and printed so that they would be out there and they, they're guidelines, they're not bylaws, they're not you have to do it. And in the future, we will be looking toward form-based zoning, which would be more than a guideline that you would have to do. But we have the design guidelines, but we haven't really promulgated them yet. But we will very soon, now that Jed's here.
Good. Good job, Jed. You know, we live in probably the most scientific community in the world. I think that we ought to include that these buildings need to be energy efficient, not just building code requirements, but net zero passive. We really need to push the envelope and I think this is a good opportunity to do that. And people said that adds cost. Believe me, there are enough incentive programs out there to reduce not only construction costs, but the operating cost. And I think it ought to be a requirement that these buildings meet at a minimum net zero energy requirements.
A minute, see if I can capture this.
I tend to disagree with Mr. Drewley that incentives are not needed. I know that it's costing me in McGansett for the 10 units I'm building there, close to $450,000 per unit. And that's using a very good contractor here, you know, the Valley Group. We've, and I know the construction costs have gone up, but even bringing our lumber prices down and all the other costs associated with it. At $450,000 per unit, that's not affordable. And that, as Mr. Fox just said, rents are going up. And I just don't think we're gonna be able to get the 25% affordable units without providing some incentives. And I've got a list of some ideas. First of all, and we talked about it and Mike talked about it before, is we really got to expedite plans for these projects. Expedite means that if you hear a project tonight and you need to make changes, it automatically goes on your next agenda. Same with the ZBA. If we could just get the ZBA to do that. You know, we get, we get a project from the ZBA, they have questions, it gets delayed until the next opening on the agenda, which may be two months down the road. We need to find a way that those projects are priority and get placed on the next agenda. I think we ought to waive or reduce the application building permit fees for these projects. It's not a lot of money, but it makes a difference. Waive or reduce the sewer and water connection fees. Again, it's not a lot of money, but it helps. I think that these projects ought to get priority funding from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. We're gonna be raising more money, putting more money in there, we're gonna need projects. And by putting these projects with a priority funding, I think would help get more developed. Doug talked about parking. I'm doing a project in, I know it's downtown New Bedford, 45 units, zero onsite parking. Yes, there's public transportation there, but there's a bus that goes up and down the street. People are living more and more without their car. The more parking we provide, the more cars we're gonna be, we're gonna have. We've got to get away from providing space for cars. We really do. We need space for people. So eliminate the parking on transit routes if they provide alternatives. One of the alternatives that we're doing at our project in New Bedford is that there's a company out there now that will provide you for no cost, an electric vehicle that people can use. They've got to pay for it when they use it, but we're gonna have two of them onsite. So people, they gotta go to the store, they need a car, they can use it. So if developers provide alternatives to the car, to everyone having a car onsite, we should look at that and also bicycles. Last one is to not increase the property tax on these properties for five years after it's built. That will give people an incentive to say, you know, I'm gonna spend $3 million building this building, now I'm gonna pay more tax at a town. Let's give them a break for five years. I think we can survive without it. And I think that's a good incentive that, that would give them. So hopefully some of these suggestions will get into your next draft. And I think that will help provide a type of projects I think we all want to see. I'm, I'm really concerned about the aesthetics because these are located on very visible areas of our town. I think we really need to give folks direction what we want.
Lady at the back.
Thank you.
Michael, thank you very much. You've given a lot of thought to this. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I don't know your name.
Eleanor.
Eleanor Ling from Preising One. First of all, I'd like to say good evening, Madam Chair and member. I really thank you for the opportunity to comment. As a matter of fact, I sent an email this afternoon to several of you, including Mr. Tom Bott. And, thank you. I wasn't going to, to, to plan to speak because I already sent an email, but since Mr. Galasso has brought up net zero issue, I would like to follow up on that and expand on that. First of all, I'd like to thank, you know, the board for spending all this effort and time in coming up with this wonderful plan. And I think it's, you know, in addition to housing opportunities, especially the, you know, because we have an urgent need for affordable housing, I think that this is really a good opportunity to incorporate a lot of climate solutions, you know, in, in, in the bylaw. As Mr. Galasso has alluded to earlier, I mean, if, if we don't have some language in the bylaw for the developers, it may not happen. So in my email to, to the board, to the chair, to the vice chair and Mr. Bott, I have suggested some language for, for the bylaws, particularly in terms of net zero. Because currently, as you know, the state legislature is still working on the net zero definition. And it is an opt-in for the town, so it is not a done deal yet. So I propose to have language in the bylaw that says, quote, "Developers, developments So I propose to have language in the bylaw that says, quote, "Developers, developments must meet state net zero building code for the effective use of energy following the adoption of said code by the Town of Falmouth." Because I think that this net zero code needs to be adopted by the town meeting. And also, I propose to add language in the bylaw that says, quote, "Developments must consider installing rooftop solar panel or solar carport where feasible," unquote. And in terms of parking, I would like to suggest that you put some language in, "Develop, developments must equip up to 20% of their total parking space to be electrical, electric vehicle service equipment installed, and the remaining of the total spaces to be electrical vehicle ready for future installation." Because, you know, not everybody is going to walk. And we want to encourage electrical vehicles instead of, you know, fossil fuels, combustion engine vehicles. And also, I would like to propose that the planning board may require the developments to provide e-bike parking amenities because they are getting, you know, more popular. Let me see what else. Yes. And the last thing I would like to propose is that the planning board may require up to 20% of the total number of parking spaces to be allocated for compact, compact cars with certain dimensions. I mean, the planning board can decide, you know, so you can have more parking space, parking And of course, you know, those spaces shall be clearly designated for compact cars only. So these are the few suggestions I have, and I'm sure that other people, you know, would have comments as well. So I'll, I'll stop here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Made note of each of your proposals. Jessica.
Hi, I'm Jessica Mark Welch from Precinct Six. I also actually came to express my, actually somewhat surprised that there was nothing in the bylaw as written about energy use and to speak for net zero requirements or, and one option for net zero requirements would be to refer to the Massachusetts laws and the Massachusetts definition of net zero. Another one would be to put something directly in the bylaw. We didn't want to wait to see what Massachusetts is going to do. And those could be, for example, to require the use of heating and cooling equipment that doesn't require fossil fuels. That could be air source or ground source heat pumps. Those are, I think, fairly standard achievable technology, particularly for new construction. Also, again, that parking spaces be provisioned with at least the wiring so that you could install a charger for your car. And that the buildings be constructed so that rooftop solar could be installed, or you could require the actual installation of rooftop, rooftop solar, or just that the roof, the buildings are oriented and the roofs are oriented so that solar could be installed. The roof is strong enough for solar and the sizing and the electrical panels are sufficient for solar. So those were my specific requirements for what were, specific suggestions for what we could put into the bylaw. And I just, and I'm thrilled that there are other people here who are thinking along the same lines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Solar shingles.
Eric?
Yeah.
Perhaps it's solar shingles.
Solar shingles?
Yeah.
Oh, I might have brought this with me.
Thank you, Eric.
I can read the screen, but I...
We have our glasses so scratched.
Well, thank you. First, let me say it's been one of the great privileges of my life in the last few years to work with this subcommittee of yours on this project. You know, it's, you've got three very smart people here, put a lot of time and energy into this, and you've come up with something that, you know, I agree with Jim, and I almost never agree with Jim. That this is going to be really something that will transform this town in a good way. And it's, I'm very impressed. You're well aware, I think, that I've spent the last 12 years immersed in wastewater and...
That didn't sound too good.
A little slow there. But you may not know, I've also been immersed in affordable housing as a member of the Falmouth Housing Corporation. Bob Murray, remember, started that 20 years ago or so. And it's had a really good track record. We've built about 250 affordable units in this town. And, but that's not nearly enough, I've come to learn. And I've come to learn why it's not nearly enough. Last time I asked Carla, the number may have changed, but to meet the town's 10% requirement under 40B, we need 417 more units. And it's probably more now, but it's at least 417 more subsidized units. And at the rate we're building them now, we're never going to get there. There's only three ways. You know, it's taken me a few years to learn the ins and outs of this, but what I've learned is there's only three ways to get subsidized units built in this town that count toward the subsidized housing unit requirement. One way is the way we've been doing it with the Falmouth Housing Corp. and the Falmouth Housing Trust, nonprofits building all subsidized units in large and small projects. The town contributes money. The problem is it takes two or three years to put these packages together. The state and the federal money has to come, the local money has to come. Falmouth Housing Corp. has been really running quite as fast as anybody could run in terms of producing these projects. You just mentioned two or three of them that have come online in the last two years. But the next, the net gain for this town out of all those projects is about 20 per year. Okay? Remember, we're trying to get to 417? Okay, 20 per year doesn't do it, and that's a full blast. The other way we do it is the way John Druley does it, the homeownership model. And that, you know, it gives people a home, it's good for some people. It's not good for a lot of people because we don't do it in great numbers. And the worst part of that one, of course, is when, say, if you build 20 units and five of them are affordable, you've got 15 more that you have to meet. So in essence, your gain out of the 20 units is only three units when you're trying to get to your subsidized housing inventory. Three units per year doesn't do it. The last way to do it, and this is the one we've seen everywhere else in other parts of the state, is to have a 40B unit development by private developers. And we haven't seen one of those in Falmouth. They don't do it. And so the question hit, hit me and everybody else, why don't they do it? You know, why don't they take advantage of the 40B law and build rental units where 25% would be in the subsidized housing, subsidized housing inventory, and the other three-quarters would be market rate? Why won't they do it? Well, 40B is one reason. It's a lot of paperwork, there's profit limitations, there's cost certification. It's a big fat pain for a developer to take it on. The high key building cost, you have to borrow money and amortize it. And the trouble in Falmouth is the alternative model, the homeownership model, is so much easier for a developer. They can put the project wherever they want, so they put it in the high, high-end parts of town. They can sell the units off and go away. You know, they don't have to sit there and hold them for 20 years. So that's what they do in our town. And they don't do the rentals. So we've had zero rentals. So this bylaw is crafted to address that need, and it does so in a number of very specific Mixed use and commercial are both allowed. You can't do that with 40B, right? 40B is only housing. So that's an advantage right away. You miss out on the 40B paperwork, you miss out on the profit limitations, you miss out on the cost allocations. That's a good thing. You can add value to your existing property by adding housing units. You can't do that with 40B. The developer may already own the land. If so, he's got zero land costs, for starters. If he builds a commercial structure with parking and landscaping and foundation and walls and roof, adding residential units to that building doesn't mean you have to add parking and landscaping and foundation and a roof. You've already built them. So, so the cost per unit for the additional rental space is, is substantially lower than it would otherwise be. And, and of course, there are serious federal and state tax advantages to owning rental property. So for all those reasons, this bylaw incentivizes what we want to see happen here. It's not unique to this town. Chapter 40R, which is a state statute which created in 2005, that allows for mixed use and multifamily development, up to 20 units per acre, just like yours. They require 20% be deed restricted to the 80% income. You've got 25%, so that'll count for the, for the 10% requirement. And that's also approved by the planning board, by special permit. The trouble with that, and the reason that I think your subcommittee wisely decided not to go that route, is the state DHCD has to approve it every step of the way. You know? The proposed locations, they have to pre-approve, the bylaw, they have to pre-approve, the zoning map, they have to pre-approve, the design standards, they have to pre-approve. We don't need that in this town. You know, we're quite capable of doing all those with a bylaw and not, not going the 40R route. Barnstable has had a multifamily affordable housing bylaw since 2008. They allow for 16 units per acre, again, by special permit from the board, from the planning board, 25% to go to the SHI. Nantucket, they adopted one of these in 2017, which allows approximately 20 per acre. Again, the planning board is, is the authority that allows these things. Nantucket is building them as we speak. Nantucket is going to meet their 10% SRI requirement when this project is done. One project has put them over the top. So, but the, but the key element here that has changed the picture so radically in the favor of this bylaw that I can hardly believe it happened when it did, in January of this year, the legislature added a section to chapter 48, which allows towns to adopt zoning for mixed use multifamily developments, just what you've got, ineligible locations, which they define as town centers, existing commercial districts, and near transportation sites, exactly the sites you've been talking about, the B2s, chosen by the town by right or by special, special permit. This is the first time you've had the choice in state statute. By right is the choice you made.
That's the key point. We, we are doing this by right. There is no zoning board in this. That's, a lot of people, we didn't make that clear, Mike, you didn't seem to know that. But this is a by right use. So it, it just goes through design review and planning board and doesn't go back and forth to ZBA, back and forth, back and forth. Should cut the project and time in half. I think that clarification, thank you for making that. That was important.
No, that, that really is true. And your chairman is quite right. You know, we have examples of buildings in this town that have this kind of density, that have the commercial space in them, 704 Main Street.
Right.
There's 58 units in there and four commercial spaces on three acres. Okay? So it has been done and it can be done. No one should be under the impression it's going to be a bunch of little Cape Cod cottages. It's not. It's going to be sort of the size and density of, of that project. But we've seen it on our own Main Street, and I think people are comfortable with it. So it's, it's something we need to do. It's something, this board obviously deserves great credit for rolling it forward. You're going to get a lot of input on how to modify it. We'll only be careful to not modify it to the point where developers don't want to do it. Because then you've just wasted everybody's time. The other piece you want to watch out for is to make it really easy for a developer, we have to make sure that the Cape Cod Commission doesn't have its, its fingers on it. Which, which means, and they've done this before, in Hyannis, they created a business incentive zone. I refer to it as a commission-free zone. Because basically, it says, you, the town, have picked these areas for this kind of intensive development. We, the commission, have looked at them and found that they meet the kind of standards that we like to see, you know? And therefore, we have allowed you to, to allow developments in those areas that don't have to come see us. Falmouth has one of those at the EDIC, where, where they, they worked together with the commission. They came up with a deal that said, okay, if you go along with these guidelines that we, the commission, have recommended and you've adopted, any further development there does not have to come to the commission.
Right, I think it has a name, suburban something.
That's part of our plan, too.
Yeah, no, that's, that's an important factor because, you know, developers will probably, in some cases, want to go over 10,000 square feet or 30 units. And that's where the commission would kick in. So hopefully, this will provide an incentive for people to do what this town needs to have done, which is provide rental housing. 25% of the people who live in this town rent. And they're not going to turn around and buy, they can't afford to buy. And with the median sale prices now over half a million dollars, fewer and fewer are going to be able to buy. And our current inventory of rental units is dropping. Everybody thinks they can do an Airbnb, or they can, you know, rent it to somewhere from New York who's trying to escape COVID. Or, you know, it's, they are, the housing that's available for renters has basically disappeared. The Falmouth Housing Corp., we're finding people coming to us and just saying, you know, I can't rent anywhere. There's nothing out there. So to get us to this 10% and to, and to get the rental people in this town into housing that we need, this bylaw will do it. And you deserve great credit for coming up with the idea, pushing the idea, and in November, you're going to make it happen.
Kat has a question for you.
Eric, when I was looking at this and listening to what Carla said, Spring Bar's Road, most of them are 80%.
Right.
AMI. What, how this is stated is earning less than 80%.
Up to.
Oh, well, that's not how it's said in here. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Feel free to edit it.
Up to. 80% or less of AMI. Okay.
Yeah, up to 80.
Yeah, okay.
Eric, could I ask you to give Jillian from the Enterprise of the same copy? Because we have an opportunity to educate right through what she's about to do.
Sure.
So that would be great. Because this is a long rationale for yes for this overlay bylaw. Thank you. And thank you for all your help in putting it together.
Well, thank you. I mean, you, you all provided the incentive, and I was thrilled to be part of it.
Are there any other comments? Bob?
Thank you for your record, Bob. I'm an Falmouth attorney who does a lot of land use work. I really just want to raise three issues, not necessarily have a discussion because you've been at it quite a while, and you've got other things on your agenda that I'm anxious for you to get to. But here are three issues. One, as you know, the zoning bylaw has a definition of multifamily use. And it's different than the definition of multifamily dwelling because it includes one, two, or three-family dwellings that are used for multifamily use. So for instance, you can have two duplexes, and that's a multifamily use, even though the definition of multifamily dwelling says three or more units. So my question is, how, why have duplexes been eliminated from part of, and of a residential multifamily dwelling project? There are, for instance, five duplexes included in the Woods Hole Partners project at the Nautilus in Woods Hole. I believe that the Lawrence Farm condominium on Depot Avenue is duplexes. So anyway, I just wanted to suggest that maybe there's a reason to include duplexes to allow them to be part of an option in a multifamily development. So you used the word multifamily dwelling units. Residential multifamily unit dwelling units are allowed. But if it said multifamily dwelling use is allowed, then perhaps it would allow duplexes.
Oh, okay.
The second issue I wanted to raise is that the language of the bylaw is not clear to me. The second issue I wanted to raise is that the language of the bylaw is not clear to me, and I've only read it a few times now, is whether the affordability requirements apply to all development in the overlay districts, or whether it only applies to residential multifamily dwelling units that take advantage of the increased density. That is, the proposed 240, 259A says that all uses currently allowed in B1, B2, and business redevelopment are allowed. In other words, if one wanted to do a project using the current zoning bylaw language of six units per acre, you could do that by special permit and without needing to comply with all the other affordability requirements that are here. I think that's your intent, but it is not at all clear to me that that's the case.
We thought because we're using an overlay district that the existing uses could stay. That was our understanding.
Yes, but it needs to say that because you're putting an overlay district on it and it says all development in the overlay district now needs to meet these affordability requirements. That's really what it says. It'd be easy to make that clear.
We're with the same intent. We, that's just, we've got two better words.
And finally, as a subject that I think is worth probably more discussion is the decision to make developments of 20 units per acre by right as opposed to by special permit. I think the process of getting a special permit should be made easier. I'm not saying whether a special permit should be granted by the Board of Appeals or the planning board. But there will be people who are rebutters to 20-unit-per-acre projects who will feel that they aren't getting a say. And the planning board is going to be in a position where the developer, who comes with a 20-unit-per-acre project, which perhaps isn't the best project laid out, or perhaps not in the best place, and is going to tell you that this is a by-right use and that you have to approve it. And the site plan review process may not give you the authority, doesn't give you the authority to turn it down. It's going to create a quandary. And the problem with site plan review is that the appeal process is very vague, doesn't protect the rebutters, and it doesn't make it clear what the process is. It seems to me that we're going from six units per acre maximum by special permit to 20 units per acre by right. And maybe it should be 20 units per acre by special permit, but that the town should be working hard to approve projects quickly. And you know, site plan review isn't so easy. This board gets referrals from the engineering department that are every bit as detailed as with a special permit. Multiple hearings end up being held to get a site plan approval. Frankly, I don't consider site plan much easier, if any easier, than a special permit. But what I like about special permits is that the law is clear as to what the appeal process is. And I also think it's important, from the rebutters' point of view, that there be the potential for an appeal process. Now, there will be cases where the town would like to get a project underway and the project is delayed by an appeal. I'm just not sure that's not in the public interest in some cases. So that's an issue. I think this idea of doing it by right, I think that needs to be sold. I think there are obvious reasons both ways, but I don't think it's been discussed, at least, you know, maybe in your committee you've discussed it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for raising that issue because it is one of the main features of what we're proposing. And it really does need to be raised and it needs to be discussed. We have years of experience of working with special projects. We do not have years of experience working with by-right projects. So it's hard to compare them. This is an experiment. I think, and you're right, Bob, we really do need to move on now to the rest of our agenda. Carla, if, oh, and?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Carla Froney, Housing Coordinator. I appreciate all the work you folks have done. And from the very moment, John Drooly came to me a couple of years ago and we started to speak about this as a concept. And where you have taken it from that point has just been fabulous. And I want to applaud you for all the work you've put into this. Those of us in the affordable housing industry know that you'll never get enough affordable housing unless you have a multifamily bylaw. That's the way to go. And you've taken steps to do that. So I applaud you and thank you for doing that. I'd like to talk with you a little bit about the subsidized housing inventory, the SHI. So it's kind of an acronym that not a lot of people necessarily know what it means. The subsidized housing inventory is something that the state generates based on information we provide the state about affordability of our units in perpetuity, meaning that they'll go on and on. So I, this multifamily bylaw has evolved from not including the SHI to now including the SHI. And that's the part I wanted to speak with you about. We have an interest in town in trying to reduce the number of 40Bs or comprehensive permits for a variety of reasons. And with a comprehensive permit, developers can bypass certain town regulations if indeed they develop 25% of their units in a development as being affordable. 25% of the units and they can bypass certain regulations.
Carla, do you mind if I interrupt you for a moment? One of the planning board rules is that you're here to speak with us rather than the public. That's one of our rules.
Oh, I apologize, I tend to speak with everyone.
No, and I can see why you're doing that and you're right. It's certainly more courteous, but it's not what we do, unfortunately.
Oh.
The camera is there.
The camera's here and you folks all know about the SHI. These folks probably don't.
Don't, and they really do need to know.
But this isn't the format to do that.
Right, but this is not the forum for it and it might not be the time. I think the subject is well worth the discussion. So I wonder if we are going to continue this hearing, I expect, till our next meeting, not several meetings away. And I hope that you will make time for it then.
Well, then, I will adjust my presentation to you and speak directly to you as you're requesting. So what I'd like to say is, in your bylaw, you are allowing a developer to develop affordable units at the rate at 25% with all the remaining units in a rental development being listed on the SHI. So what that means is only 25% of your units are affordable. 75% are not. A developer is getting this generous density of 25 units per acre when they only have to create 25% affordable. We know now with the comprehensive permit, 25% of the units are affordable, six units per acre. This bylaw says 25% affordable with 20 units per acre. I appreciate that you want to increase the subsidized housing inventory. But I'm concerned about us loading up the subsidized housing inventory with units that aren't really affordable. So that's a concern I have. And one other thing I'd like to mention to you is that the area median income are 80% affordability. We have a lot of people in town who really need units that are up to 120% affordable. And I'd like to see you consider that those other 75% that are going to go on the SHI, if you can somehow consider them with a higher affordability other than the 80%. Thank you.
Good points, thank you.
Okay, so I think we have to state when it's continued, too.
Yeah. So, time being what it is, we're going to conclude this part and we will continue, I think, until our next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
The 27th?
July 27.
So if you, anything you wish to have added to the record about this, your comments, please come back then.
And if I may, I've noted to a couple of people who have email addresses that I can find on my phone, if they could forward me their written comments. That's very helpful. So, written comments are very handy for the board and the staff to assess, although we're both taking notes furiously here. And we look back at the tape as well to capture all those things. But if you have the opportunity to forward us your written comments, that's very helpful for us and we're trying to take a look and incorporate those into the drafts. That'd be great.
And for each of you who did comment tonight, thank you very much for giving this a great deal of thought. We need it, we appreciate it.
See you, Doug.
Okay, do we need to vote on that?
No, it's just continued.
Okay, so that's continued. Well, now, here, next on our agenda, a definitive plan application to create five-lap subdivisions on Palmer Avenue. This is from Blue Companies Incorporated, finally. And thank you very much for your patience. You had some earlier and you've used it all up.
Not a doctor.
Do we need an extension?
Of what?
Where the room?
Do we need an extension beyond 11 o'clock tonight?
We may, the way this is going. It's actually 10:30 is our policy.
That was a joke.
Oh, thank you.
I don't think it was.
She took me seriously.
I do, I want to take you very seriously. Thank you for your contribution.
Why can't she?
See the plan better with it off, thank you.
And I just see her.
Yeah, that's good, thanks, John.
We're envious.
Really?
I wouldn't know.
There are Jillian here.
That's because the thing just came on.
So the plans they got, you got to. These are on here because.
It's 71. Usually getting ready for bed.
My daughter, granddaughter at the airport, she went at 3:00 a.m.
Oh, jeez.
No traffic.
Of course not, not at 3:00 a.m.
Till we get to the airport.
That means you haven't gotten enough sleep, for sure.
My name is Michael McGrath. I'm a registered engineer and professional insoverre. And there's been a lot of review of these plans. So what I propose to do is, since I didn't finish some of the changes till today, is I brought hard copies so that you can have,
Can we have them?
Take home with you, copies of what I am going to present to you. So what I'd like, with your permission, is to get each member a copy of the graphics and things. So do I have that permission?
John can take them and we'll hand them down.
Are they also available here, Tom? Do we have them all here?
That's what we will be looking at.
You might just keep them all if you give them to me, Mike.
Thanks. So I don't know if the plans that are on the screen are these plans because these plans came in today.
Okay.
So what we likely have on the screen are the plans that we have received previously that have been sent to engineering for their review.
Bob?
I'll just tell you, as you know, Bob Ament, I have reviewed the plans that Mike did today. And it's very useful to have this plan on the screen. Mike can explain the very minor differences that are prepared in response to concerns that have been raised about these plans. So he can discuss the engineering's concern and tell you the little changes that he's made.
Thanks.
The bottom line is I submitted a complete package to the planning board and it seemed like some of the reviewers didn't even read and commented and raised issues about things that had already been submitted. So for instance, there's basically a six-page initial review. But why don't we start with the beginning? This is a possum land that's on the north side of Palmer Avenue. And when you go out of town, if you were to look at the top graphic that I gave you, the top graphic shows you where the locus is. So basically, is this a pointer?
No, well, actually, that, yeah, give it a shot.
Give it a shot?
Mouse, there should be a mouse.
Oh, all right. Sometimes.
So, Mike, use the cursor on the computer to point it.
All right. I'm terrible with that.
There you go, you're getting there. Moving it now.
Anyways, when you, this is the bicycle path. This is Palmer Avenue and there's the fork. When you leave town, there's a stretch of two-lane highway before it goes into the divide. So this is the last left before the long stretch. This is the bicycle path. This is Colson Lane. This is a project called Gooding's Way. And then there's Drummond Road beyond it. So what this was, was the original plan. And what I've done is, there has been several changes. If you were to start with the, as I said, the first exhibit on the top was a locus map, a location map. So if you go to the next one, I just show you a, basically, it's a colored version of that drawing right there with several different changes. The changes that have been made was the town wanted a sedimentation and erosion control plan. So I ended up drawing as a limit of work all the way around. The town said that they didn't like this. I have a little kink here. So what I've done is I've changed the plan so that there's a straight line in the center line right here. The other thing is that we've applied to, basically, perform clearing on Palmer Avenue so we can get sufficient site distance. And the towns asked us for proof that we have the required site distance by referring to a specific diagram that they alerted me to. And when I, so the third copy down of what you have just received is a copy of the plan that I used that shows that we have the proper site distance. The town has a standard that's, I didn't, frankly, I didn't know about, that was on the engineering website. And they want us to prove that, for instance, in a 25-mile-prower zone, that there's basically 280 feet of available site distance. So, I don't know where the mark is. So what we've done is we've, we have, the way you do this is you put the eye of the driver 11 foot back from the edge of pavement and then we haven't, we can see right now. we haven't, we can see right now between here and here. We can, I can see 280 feet. But we had, the, a contractor was supposed to have all of this vegetation gone so anybody could see it. The way we saw it was, and it hasn't been done yet. But he tells me that by Monday, and perhaps what we should do is meet as a group just to go over that. And the other thing that I've asked the waiver for was, I put the kink in here, and then there's not enough distance between Goodings Way and this road. You have a subdivision regulation that requires there be 200 feet. And if you go back to the original locus map I showed you, Goodings Way is a very low-density road in that it only serves for houses. And while the map shows that it's the, a, an apparent entrance to Woodrise, it's not. It's, it has a chain link gate across it. So Goodings Way is a very low-density road, and if, the, this is the, as far as I'm concerned, this is the best location for this road because it has a very good home site in this location, a very good home site in this location. There's a very good home site over here, there's a very good home site in here, and there's a very good home site here. And so I've laid this out so we get the best, basically, the best return for building a road. One of the things that you should be aware of is there's already an endorsed approval not required plan. And I have given you a copy of the approved not required plan. That's the very last page. It's already been endorsed. So the issue here is that basically, instead of five driveways, you, you're gonna have basically one entrance onto Palmer Avenue. And I believe that's superior to this type of development. So I believe that, that that you should be aware that the developer is purposely trying to build a very good product. And I gotta tell you something, the, the attitude that I'm getting is that, you know, I, I tell you this. Massachusetts is indeed the cradle of bureaucracy when, when for a little subdivision that really only, again, I could create the approval not required. So if you, if you actually look at this, the only, the bottom line is to get the amount of comments I got was uncalled for, as far as I'm concerned. I'm gonna be blunt. Now, a couple of years ago, I know, I irritated people in town government because on a 40B project, they criticized my drainage design and they criticized my capability as an engineer. So I stood up at a public hearing and said, "I've designed 23 miles of road and found with no puddles." Quick, think of three puddles. They're always on town roads. And that, I, I know I irritated certain people. But, at the same time, I have a, as far as I'm concerned, I have a freedom of speech. And, but, there's a funny aspect to this is that after I said that at a public hearing, I got a call from a lady on West Street in North Elm. So the next rainstorm, I went out there with my boots, and sure enough, there's a big puddle. So I, I waved through the puddle, and I walked and knocked on the door and said, "Can I borrow a rake?" "What do you need a rake for? Just watch." So she lent me a rake, I walked out and basically unclogged the catch basin that was clogged with leaves. And in eight minutes, the water was gone. You should have heard the lady. "You're a miracle man. What did you do with all that water?" I said, "It was easy." The catch basin for immigrants was clogged with leaves. So the town wanted an erosion control plan. And I still see that they are recommending that you hire a cons, that the developer be told to hire a consultant to review the erosion control plan, when on the town website or the DPW, there's a checklist of what's needed for erosion control plan. So I, I think that's just plain wrong. And I, as far as I'm concerned, I'm always gonna have a freedom of speech. And in any case, I think that I've answered every one of the questions that were raised. One thing I want to make sure you understand is that I have built some very significant roads and very significant subdivisions. For instance, I live on, on Cliffwood Lane in West Elm. I live in, basically, Pine Bay Estates. I would urge you to drive through it. Now, when you first come in on Cliffwood, the first section was designed by another engineer, and there's a very bad curve in it. But drive through the rest, because the cross-section that was used there is a cross-section that was used for years upon years upon years. Now, the town wants to have every tree cut. You want the entire 404 foot layout widened and made flat. Excuse me, that is what you do in an industrial subdivision. I've done that in industrial subdivisions, but I've built, as I said, I've built very significant roads. And as far as I'm concerned, I would ask you to grant the waiver of the cross-section. The other point is that the town requires sidewalks. Hello? There's no sidewalks anywhere near here. And yet, yet to me, you should waive the sidewalk. The state law says that you can have subdivision regulations, but you can't make a divi, a subdivision build something that you don't build yourself. And as far as I'm concerned, if you take a road and there's no sidewalk, you should build it. There's also a comment that I'm providing an access, I'm providing an access that's for the private use of these five people so they can get out to the bike path. And there's a comment that the developers should be forced to set monuments. Hello? I've never monumented an easement yet. So I, I look at this as, as I said, to me, there's, you should look at this and, and compare it to what's been done in the past. Because I, I, I spoke earlier that on a 40B project impossible, I got an attaboy. And yet, what do I get my own hometown? As I said, I know they didn't like the fact that I said I have designed roads with no puddles. So I want to make sure you understand that I think that the developer's doing the right thing. We haven't addressed the comments. I've put more drainage in. I put a manhole in here because they claim that they don't allow a connect, a direct connection with the most. When I first drew this, I had pipe to pipe to pipe. And they claim that that's gonna stir stuff up. Wow.
Mike?
That's a lot of...
Mike?
Yes.
Could we go forward?
Yes.
Because you made your presentation last time, and we're, we're repeating parts, but now, Jim has, Jim has a question.
Point something out. You keep saying the town, the town, the town. We are actually the board that does that, and we can give you waivers.
Oh.
You're talking about information that the engineering department gives us as recommendations. But they don't make the decision, we do, and you're welcome to ask for waivers. And we're depending on you asking for waivers and doing it. But we keep saying the town, the town, the town. Are you saying the engineering department recommendations? But isn't it the planning board that does this? And that is what we're here to talk about? And you have the right to ask us for waivers? And we could give you all those?
Yes.
So let's get through it, okay? Come on.
All right.
Bob, you...
We're going down the same road twice.
Well, let me just, first, I'm not quite as upset, not as upset at all as Mike seems to be. And I, I recognize this is a process. This is only our second hearing. I believe that at the next hearing, we'll get a vote. And I understand from talking with Tom Bott that the hope is to decide on some waivers tonight. So I just wanted to briefly review the waivers. Mike's already touched on the fact that we don't have 300 feet of separation from all of the roads. And the fact that we have the five lots that could each have their own driveway should be, it's all we need, really. And we do have the site distance. And this is a small subdivision. It's really a three-lot subdivision in the sense that two of the lots have frontage on Palmer Avenue. We could have laid those out A and R and then come in with the three.
We commented on that at the last hearing, and we already agree with you.
We're all in favor of it.
We already agree with you.
Perfect. And I hope the same is true, well, I, I hope the same is true with the sidewalk issue. We only have those five lots, two of which are on...
I think we're with you on the sidewalk issue. I do think that we have got a couple of issues.
Okay, that wasn't cleared off, so that's terrific. Certainly, the board made it clear that it did not agree with the engineering department that the entire 120-foot cul-de-sac. 20-foot diameter turnaround should be paved. We don't want to do that. And, and finally, there's, is this question about the easement. I thought it was a good idea to show the easement on the plan, good for marketing. Also, even though it's just for the five people in there, it means they get to go out to the bike path and don't have to go on the public ways by having that, that easement. But if I were doing it again, I wouldn't have shown it on the plan because it's just been a hassle. And we didn't need to. We can always just describe an easement in a deed, or we could have recorded a plan later on. But what's happened is, is just, it's become too much to set bounds on the each, not only on the boundary, but then on three feet of each side. It's just a place for people to trip. It's an expense. It's confusing as to where the property line is. And so I hope that you'll make it clear we don't have to set bounds on this easement for the people in the subdivision. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I do think that what we want to do is move to see if we are in large agreement on where the issues are. I'll say where I think the issues are, and if you think there are additional issues, could you please say so? So I think we have an issue about the, the cul-de-sac, how to handle that. We know we're not for paving it, but what are we for doing for it? So the cul-de-sac is one. Two, is the issue of the trees that are required to be put there. We want to discuss that. Are there other issues that you want to raise? And Bob's right, we'll probably continue it and decide next time. Pam? Pat?
I'll answer to Pam. Well, there's this joggle in here. Mike said he did something drawing a line straight.
The joggle's gone, and the straight lines are it.
Yeah, but my understanding is there's a pole there.
So we have an issue about the pole?
There is a pole there. If you, if you look at the colored plan I, can deliver it, I show you that we have straightened out the road so that it's, this, what I did is I basically took from this point to a, to a point over here, I made this straight, and I asked you for a waiver. And I show that there's at least five feet off the pole to the noose, to the edge of the pavement. So it's a straight, and what we did is we, we basically did away with this, this configuration because it seemed like people were unhappy with that configuration. So I straightened it out. If you look at this plan that's in the package, it's been straightened out. This should have been the second one.
I can't see anything right now.
What?
I'm having a vision problem. I can only see things at distance up close. I've had a surgery. I just have to listen to what you say. I can see the screen far away, but stuff up close, I can't see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It'll change in a couple of weeks when my eye comes back, but right now, I have retina surgery.
All right.
So can I ask you a question, Mike?
Sure.
So, am I under the impression, these are the plans we got today, correct?
Yes.
All right. So I haven't seen them.
You can read that?
So, am I under the impression that what you've done here to eliminate that jog is to slide the center line of the pavement off of the center line of the right-of-way? Pull it to one side so the road is straight within the right-of-way?
The pavement is straight within the road layout, yes. But it's not centered anymore.
So the center line of the pavement is not the center line of the right-of-way, and that's fine?
Right.
Most of the time?
I've asked for a waiver for that.
Okay. Just, just checking to find out what that was. Okay.
Okay. So we're good on the pole? We're good on the pole. We had a thought on the, the cul-de-sac, a way to handle that. Deb, did you want to talk about that?
Well, we talked about it today. Perhaps a rain garden in the center of the cul-de-sac? To add for increased natural drainage?
And the advantage of that is that it combines the drainage with landscaping.
Correct.
So it's not paved. It looks good, but it drains.
I'm not a, a fan of rain gardens. The, what this plan shows you is that there is going to be a subsurface leaching structure in the middle of this cul-de-sac. So I, I, this will leach and will leach a significant amount of mon, uh... We've already spent more than my, never mind. A rain garden. I'm, I'm not fond of rain gardens because I've done two of them, and they, they haven't been very good, as far as I'm concerned.
Oh, why is that?
Maintenance, maintenance, maintenance.
Oh. So whatever you're planning here doesn't need any maintenance at all?
Pardon me?
The plan that you have instead requires no maintenance?
Well, I live next to a cul-de-sac, and the biggest pain in the neck is getting it mowed. And what happens is I mow the cul-de-sac. So there is always maintenance in things like mowing. But there'll be, this is a private road, which means the five owners will have to share. And, believe me, cul-de-sacs are maintained. I don't think you really need to worry about that because and in mine, we've actually done, believe me, I, I mulched it, and we put some special plants in certain areas on it.
Mike, do you have a list of the variances that you need?
If I could understand Jed's request a little. If the center becomes a, a rain garden, are you suggesting, without having gotten the engineering department's advice, that we'd be able to eliminate the drainage structure that's, that's in the center of that and leading to another drainage structure? It just seems to me that, which is it?
You don't need both.
Yeah, may. So I, I want to make clear that you're not volunteering to mow this cul-de-sac, right, Mike? So, the idea and the concern is, is I think from the, and this is not a waiver, by the way. There's nothing in the subdivision regulations that say what's in the middle of that cul-de-sac. So we're talking about one of the engineering department's recommendations is rather than have the grass in the middle that they pave just for the ease of vehicles moving around and future maintenance of the, of the cul-de-sac. The staff, we talked about various options. If you wanted to put in, and the concern is, does this just become sort of a repository for weeds and dog poop in the middle of the cul-de-sac because it's grass or something like that? So I think there's a number of options, and one of those is that means less maintenance, perhaps. Rather than doing a traditional loam and seed of grass seed, that you look at putting things in like wildflowers or pollinators or sort of make a, you know, like a meadow-like setting there. It has less maintenance to it. So one of those things was if you've got drainage in there already, you could put specific plant types in there that would be in a rain garden. So you wouldn't have this continual mowing necessity, necessity of watering and fertilizing the center of the cul-de-sac.
Well, Tom, given, given that our rules don't actually require us to say anything about what's going to be in the center of the cul-de-sac.
Do whatever they want to say.
Statue of David there.
Yeah.
But let's just say, we're not gonna say...
Statues are fine, by the way, in the right-of-way. So, so the, the thought is, it doesn't need to be paved. They can put whatever they want in there. But if you're concerned about maintenance, and folks are concerned about maintenance, if you don't go with a traditional grass loam and seed in the center of that, and put something like wildflowers that get mowed annually or something like that, then you're... something like wildflowers that get mowed annually or something like that, then you don't have the maintenance issue.
The nature of a suggestion. Our concern was, no, don't pave it.
Right.
Yeah, and it's private property. They can do what they want.
Right, so that's where we were going with that. Do you have the list of waivers so that we could look at those?
I've got them right here.
So there are waivers within the staff report?
Yeah.
Hey, what are the client, what do you guys want?
Let's get to that.
Ask your question, please.
Yeah, John.
Is there going to be an association?
There will be a set of restrictive covenants which would provide that the homeowners can form an association. They'll decide, they get to the point, they may decide they need to do that.
I don't think they should be required to have.
I think there's going to be provisions for an association as there are that can be created. I don't think we're going to create it. If we did, we're not intending to create a nonprofit corporation or anything of the kind.
Nonprofit corporation?
We're not planning to create a corporation. It'll be some, an association which, as you know, is not a creature of state statute. It's an informal arrangement among people. And it's going to, we're going to provide that a majority or four of the five homeowners can create association with the authority to make assessments.
I got lost a little bit in Mike's presentation, but the engineering is recommending that drainage map be provided. Is that provided yet? Is that part of these plans here?
It's not here, but I know I gave, I sent my email during each minute.
To the engineering department?
I'll make sure you get it, Bob.
I don't need a copy, I'm just asking if you got it.
I did a drainage map. I did advised calculations because I had done a very simple calculation that I, the drainage actually grew because I actually did a drainage map, assuming where the houses were going to be and assuming certain driveways. And their comment was, I had assumed that the houses had driveways, so they recommended that be a position of your pool. I don't need to worry about that kind of details of that.
If I could make another comment, and it's somewhat in response to your question about association, John. You know, the subdivision rules and regulations provide that the roadway eventually is to be either conveyed to the town, and you know the town won't accept it, they'll put it on a list of, a long list, 10 years long of roads to take, or be conveyed to a, an association. So that's actually, you know, you have, supposed to do one or the other. I think that's a bylaw that is often not, no one ever follows up to see if that's done years down the road. The Drummond Road subdivision, right across the street, which I worked on around 1975, is a model that I think is much better. And that is if a interest, equal interest in the road is conveyed with each deed. Now, if you don't mention the, under Massachusetts law, a deed that doesn't mention, reserve the fee in the road, it goes to the center line of the road anyway. So what a developer's supposed to do is specifically retain ownership of the fee and then convey it to the town or to an association. I think it makes great sense to convey, with this five-lot subdivision, to convey a one-fifth interest, undivided interest in the road along with each deed. Then everybody owns the road, together with a set of restrictions that says that they can create an association, they can assess as needed. But I, I think that'd be a swell waiver to make, the waiver that the road has to be conveyed to the town or to the, to an association. And I'd be happy to have a discussion about that with the town planner before your next meeting and see, see if he doesn't agree, and show him the language that we used for Drummond Road.
All right, thank you. I have another question, if that's okay?
You have?
I know that there'll be a covenant applied to the lots here. What are we going to do about the other three lots as far as a bond goes? How are we going to handle this so that the homeowners are protected, they know the road's going to be completed, the future homeowners?
So typically what happens is that the planning board approves a subdivision, the developer has to build the subdivision, the road, before any lots are released. So the covenant that goes in place with the plan that's filed is on the three lots at the back. Those lots aren't released until someone comes to the planning board and says, here's what we've built, and the engineering department reviews it. We're just charging the battery. Mikael has been with us all night, by the way, taking notes as well on our bylaw.
Oh, dear.
So she's, she's, this is her last evening coming to us. We wanted to make sure she got to hang out with us as much as she could tonight. But in any event, back to, back to the point, is that when we create a subdivision, the plan gets filed with the registry, and a covenant goes and says, no lots will be released until the planning board releases them. So the developer builds the road, he brings it in for inspection, and we say, yeah, all this stuff is done, and the things you have to finish the road is. The value of that, those final improvements are X. So you'll provide a bond for us for those final improvements, and then we release the lots. Those last things are typically the top course, the top wearing course of the road, street trees, sometimes final drainage covers and things like that that have to be done. So what protects the residents is the covenant that goes with the registry and the board releasing those lots after the road's been improved and there's a bond in place to complete those things at the end.
They're asking for building permits on the first two lots.
Because they have frontage on Palmer Avenue.
I understand why they're asking for it. Are we going to agree to let them have an occupancy permit until, before the road's completed or a bond is in place? To protect everybody, or what do we got? What's the thoughts on this?
Well, you're eligible for a building permit with frontage on Palmer Avenue.
You already have five lots.
I understand the building permit part. I'm talking about the occupancy permit part. Can they occupy without the road being finished or without a bond in place?
I can't say what the next building commissioner is going to ask for because our current building commissioner is leaving the property here shortly. But typically, if you can't get to your site, he's going to ask how you do that. So I would venture to say that there's going to be a driveway that comes to that Palmer Avenue that gets there before the occupancy. But I can't speculate to that, but I know they are eligible for a building permit.
A driveway from their lot to Palmer Avenue?
A driveway from their lot to McSweeney Lane.
Well, I'm sure they're going to have a driveway for that, but the road will not be completed, or it may be completed. I'm just asking, they obviously can't get building permits on the other three lots until the road is completed or a bond is in place. Are we, are you recommending that we agree to have an occupancy permit on the first two lots without the road being completed? That's my question.
I can't say that is in our, is in our scope. Our scope is not occupancy permits. Our scope is frontage, roads to allow for a building permit. So I don't have an opinion I can give you on will the building commissioner give an occupancy permit for those two lots that have, are buildable because of frontage if the road isn't completed and there isn't access to McSweeney.
I don't know that Bob has an answer, but he has a thought.
Well, I think that the answer, both in the law and in a policy over the years in situations like this, is that the covenant goes on lots that are on the new road and don't have frontage on an existing road. There have been other examples, obviously, where that's the situation. So the covenant is going, as Mr. Bada said, it's going to be on three lots.
Three, five lots.
That's correct. And with the covenant not on those two front lots, if you will, I think the issue you have is, it's not an issue of planning board approval of occupancy, but I think that Tom Bada is right, that it does have to do with the building commissioner's decision as to adequate access. But let's put that aside and just be practical about this. The covenant will be on three valuable lots, and if one wanted to build just a dirt driveway that got you into the two front lots, you could do that as a matter of right in Falmouth because you only have a common driveway that needs a special permit when you get to three lots. So you could have the driveway of whatever, but what's really going to happen is the road's going to get built to go into the, all the lots, and there's going to be loads of security, and there'll be a bond posted, and it's going to be the same amount because it's based on what's needed to finish the road, not on the fact that it's three lots versus five.
The main reason I'm asking this question is, it's been, my interpretation of our responsibility is to protect the future homeowners here, that the road is going to be completed, all five homeowners, not just three. So I'm asking, how do we do that, or do we not worry about the first two? It's, they're, they're at risk. They take their own chances. That the road will be completed in the future.
So, and I've probably said this before, and I may be saying it very similar to what I did before, but the planning board's responsibility is to ensure the road is built so the lots can be created if they don't have frontage. And where those two lots are on Palmer Avenue, and those are sort of that, that discussion about, can we deny them a building permit? Can we deny them an occupancy permit? Isn't on our plate.
I'm not asking, I'm asking how do we protect their interest?
We can't.
And your answer is, it's not our business to protect.
We can't. All we can say is, you can't get a building permit unless you got frontage.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Certainly, a buyer of either of those lots can protect themselves in the terms of their purchase and sale agreement.
They can protect their, their own interests, is that what you're saying?
Yes, of course.
If our interest is to provide them access, they have...
Well, I had an example explained to me of someone that was buying a house, and they thought the road was completed, but they had to go to a rock or something, and the covenant wasn't released. And I mean, I, that's what I heard in the past, but, but these people are at risk, and that'll be their situation, so. That's what I wanted to know. So we protect three, and the other two, it's up to them.
I, I really appreciate your interest in protecting people and helping people.
Not me, not me. The board, we have a responsibility.
There is an overriding responsibility.
I'm trying to find out what our responsibility is.
And that is to follow the law and to not overreach.
I'm the last person that's going to overreach on this board.
Could we please, if you don't mind, could we use as our text the requested waivers and look at them and see where we stand on them? That might help move us forward.
So, if I may?
Yes, Tom.
So waivers requested include 305-2486, the center line of the road right-of-way. And we have talked about this before, that because there are five A and R lots that have already been approved, and the option is, in the absence of a subdivision, they could have five driveways on the road. One curb cut for the road is better than five driveways coming onto Palmer Avenue. So the offset frankly has a benefit, a public benefit, by having that rather than five curb cuts.
Correct. This is in the public interest, so we are granting this waiver.
So I think, I think we're in pretty good stead if the board is comfortable granting the waiver for the offset. But it is important to ensure that there's adequate site distance on the road where that road comes out in. So while the board may be comfortable granting the waiver, they still have to perform to ensure there's adequate site distance on the road, check the people who are coming in and off the road.
Well, and we heard earlier that in fact, that has been taken care of, that there is adequate access, and we don't have to worry about it anymore.
Well, there will likely be adequate site distance after we take a look at it, and as Mr. McGrath pointed out, that they clear some trees. But as I pointed out at the last meeting, those trees are in the public right-of-way, so it's not just you come in and just mow down somebody else's trees.
They've got to go to the, we've got to go to the tree ward and get a pre-hearing to call, allow to clear those trees that are in the public right-of-way.
Excuse me, we've already started. We have a permit, and if you've been out there, they have done a substantial amount of...
And you said it would be done before the next meeting. You already said that, right?
Right, and the other thing is that the tree, the plan that is up there puts an X through three trees, and the tree wardens already commented that it's entirely appropriate that they be removed because they have a gall aphid in them that is, affects that, that particular kind of tree, and he wants them removed.
Fine, so waiver number one, I think the board's pretty comfortable with that.
That is true, we are.
At the offset.
Okay, waiver number two, about sidewalks. What is the sense of the board? Are we all, I am in favor of this. Are you in favor of waiving the sidewalks on this road? There are no sidewalks anywhere else.
I just have a question. Is there enough room, if they ever wanted sidewalks in the future, they could be put in?
Yes.
On all sides.
Any other? So...
There's no, there's no sidewalks in the area.
Right, none.
So it's hard to impose a sidewalk when there's no...
It connects to nothing, it's just a waste of money.
Okay, so waiver number two, we're okay with this. There's a part of, added in to that dealing with street trees in the subdivision. It's possible in building the houses, there will be clearance on the lots in order to make it easier to build the houses. If we say the street trees that are required by our landscaping plan need to be placed, we will take care of that.
I found it a little ironic that they wanted to clear the entire road with, and then cut down trees and then put back trees.
Yes, that's our engineering department. It is very strange. But the putting in of these street trees, either existing trees serve for that purpose or they be added.
But I want to be clear, the "they" is us, remember? This is not anybody else. We wake the waivers and we decide, we're getting, listen to recommendations from engineering.
Right, but engineering wanted...
But they just made recommendations.
Oh, I know that.
We do, okay.
I think when we complete the waiver issue, we should talk about engineering and their form of communication.
So, may I talk about the street trees, as I've talked to a couple of you beforehand? Subdivision regulations, and many subdivision regulations have a requirement for street trees on residential subdivisions. Ours is that trees will be planted, trees in residential subdivisions shall be planted on both sides of the right-of-way, interval not exceeding 40 feet, and kept 10 feet from the approved right-of-way. So our regulation requires that when you build a road and you clear the lots for these subdivisions and put the houses in, that you plant trees along the road because trees add value, trees add beauty to the subdivision. And if we talk about, as we have before, about being in a climate crisis, as we voted at Article 37 at town meeting, then we need to have every opportunity to sequester carbon that we can. So in my opinion, planting street trees adds value. It replaces the trees that went away, and it helps to add to the equation for climate change that we are requiring the street trees to be planted. They're two-inch caliper trees at chest height. It's a standard provision in most bylaws, and while the town of Falmouth hasn't necessarily provided them before, they are in your bylaw, and I think they add a lot of value, marginal cost to the developer.
Right. What about an instance where they have not cleared the lot? Maybe rather than planting new trees, they could carefully leave some.
Well, and I've seen a lot of subdivisions that you drive into, and there's houses, and there's grass, and there's pavement, and there aren't very many trees.
Generally speaking, that's absolutely true, but I'm not talking about others. I'm talking about the, the project that they've got. This subdivision has a lot of trees on that property, and it would be possible to leave some of the trees that are much bigger than that and work around them. Maybe it's not possible, but if it were, would they substitute for the street trees that we're talking about?
The board can give a waiver if they want, but I have no idea how many trees will be cleared, nor do they, nor does their, until their contractor gets there and someone cites the house and says, because the house has to be inside the building envelope. If someone decides they don't want the house close to the street, they want the house further back from the street, more trees get cleared.
Wouldn't it be simple to provide that there has to be at least one tree every 40 feet in length?
Yes.
Existing or new? If we can leave trees and we're allowed to leave them, and we aren't required to clear the whole 44 feet, which is, seems like a terrible idea if we don't need to, then that ought to solve that problem.
Exactly. New or existing trees, at least every 40 feet. We all with that? We all with that?
And the existing will be better than a two-inch caliper.
Right.
So for clarity, are we going to be marking those trees in the field before the rest of the road gets cleared?
I think we should see those trees living, planted, before you release the covenant. That's the requirement.
Right.
They're either the original trees, at least forty feet.
If the trees are cut down, we'll have to plant, then we'll have to plant trees according to the bylaw.
This is good, so I think we can state our decision in that manner.
Alrighty.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question for clarification?
I don't know if you'd go to the mic.
I do live on Carson Lane, and this is about site distance that Mr. Bott has brought up. And I apologize, this is the first time I pay attention to this project, because I found out about this project on the agenda, you know, for today's hearing of the mixed-use overlay district bylaw. And I'm not against the project, I'm neutral. I just want to ask a clarification question. So if I understand correctly, are you saying that you're going to widen the Palmer Avenue? No? Just to cut down some trees?
Right.
To improve the site distance?
Right.
Okay, I appreciate that, because when we come out from Carson Lane, may I go to the?
No, I see where Carson Lane is.
Yeah, and we can see as far as the house to the right of the proposed project, or subdivision, and I think, you know, it's the Marshall's family's house. And so whatever you do to improve the site distance, it will be fabulous, and I appreciate that. Yeah, because it's a pretty, it's very difficult to look at, look to the left on Palmer when we are at the corner of Carson Lane and Palmer, to see incoming cars from the left. So, yeah, if you can improve the site distance, that would be excellent. Thank you, that's my comment.
That's good to know, thank you.
So may I also send sheen on the topic? I'm Karen Tovary, I'm at 724 Palmer, directly across from where the trees are being cleared. So I'm trying to understand where this road is, is it directly across from my driveway? Because I'm just concerned.
Well, right now, right now, if you go, if you've looked out the street, it's already cleared where the road's going to be. So where that stake is, and that big stretch of dirt, that's where the road's going to go at.
So that's directly across my driveway? Yeah, because I think to your point, the concern is that traffic on that turn, I've had people hit my big tree out at the driveway, so I just, just if we can figure out over the course of time, because there's a lot more traffic on the road now with the camp, the glamping place, and certainly five more houses, it's just, and there are no sidewalks, lots of cyclists, pedestrians, I walk to the bike path all the time, so just something to think about.
Thank you. I think I see where your house is on this plan, if you want to look at it.
Yeah, directly across.
724?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so.
Next, I don't understand.
The traverse tables, this is an artifact that should have been out of our subdivision regs a long time ago, and we'll get around to fixing it at some point, but Mike can keep his traverse tables forever.
Right, so we're.
That's an easy waiver.
Okay, and then on the boundary marks, called monuments here, what is the sense of the board? Anyone wish to comment? Pam, Pat?
So close.
Isn't it amazing the later it gets, the mine slips?
I know, and I'm sorry.
I understand why easements are not monumented, but I also understand that they tend to disappear over time, and they become part of the people's property on either side. And if somebody in there has a dispute with somebody else, they're not going to want them walking across their land, their land, when it's an easement. I don't know that it needs to be fully monumented, but there should be some kind of, I don't know, a little stake or something put in the ground to indicate.
To indicate the original boundary, or the easement?
You're going to have to show somehow that there's an easement, so that it doesn't disappear over time, and I come at this from the fact that our property had an easement on it, and we didn't know it, except we paid two different tax bills. And then for tax purposes, they were joined. Then when we put the addition on, we thought, well, let's combine them. We're told it's land courted land, they'll spend years trying to do that. So, I don't know, with something like a twenty-foot easement along the side, that would go to the property behind us, that had no function that we could see, and we could never find out why it was there. And remember, this subdivision goes back into the twenties, or eighteen hundreds, or something like that. So, I don't know, I feel uneasy if we don't somehow indicate, just from our own knowledge, that they tend to disappear.
We're going to bound the property line, and there'll be a bound at the property line, there's not an easement between the lots, the easement is on the lots. We're going to bound the property line, everybody will know that.
Oh.
An easement three feet wide on each side of that property line.
Okay.
I see this as a private property issue, should just let them do what they want.
That's fine, then, that was my comment, that I, no easements tend to.
It was in the middle, then we would be bounding the lots, and they would be, the bounds would be six feet apart, but that's not the case.
Anyone with a continuing problem on this? Alright, so we're waiving that, okay.
So that was sort of our goal, is to roll through the waivers tonight.
Yes, we just did it.
And having received the revised plans and these things, we'll be chatting with engineering over the next week, and hopefully having a resolution on what the technical issues are, and when we get back here in two weeks, conceivably having a vote. Under Massachusetts general law, the planning board has one hundred and thirty-five days to approve a subdivision plan. This subdivision plan hasn't been here for nearly one hundred and thirty-five days, so I think as far as we talk about expediting things and making things happen, we try very hard to do that. But at the same time, if we have a rule or a regulation about something, I've told people before, I'm not smart enough to know which ones we meant and which ones we're kidding about, so if there's a regulation about it, and our engineering department or any engineer looks at it, he's going to ask the question and say, what's up with this, and that's why we address those things.
Right.
I appreciate that, but I also want to comment on what the engineering department sent us. We defer to the planning board on any number of things, and I see this actually as directions toward things that need to be cleared up in our bylaws, more than directions to what we need to deal with, with an applicant. I don't know if you see it the same way.
I have grabbed those back from you. Well, it's not all of it.
No. Wait a minute, so we'll, John?
There was a mention of outside oversight for the road to be installed, I don't think that's going to be a necessary requirement.
Neither do I.
Neither do I.
In fact, we voted against that, and it gets put back in every single subdivision here, trying to go over our vote.
Right.
That's not true.
Okay, yeah, this is fifty-eight something.
That's not true.
It's not true, we didn't.
We did vote against it, but it doesn't come up at every single subdivision.
Oh, you're right.
All the other departments have that in place, and it's something that we have to consider in the future, but I wouldn't blanketly say it's against every subdivision that way.
Well, I see it come back all the time.
I've got part of it.
Maybe not every time, but I thought we.
I don't want any of it.
Whatever, I've said what I said.
I'll just take it.
So the board is comfortable with the waivers?
Mm-hmm.
We have a number of technical issues to work through and make sure we're all on the same page with the, and so I, I'm guessing that the board is going to make a motion to continue this hearing for two weeks.
That's what I was about to do.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
So when's the next meeting?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Okay, moving on.
By the way, I predict this next thing is going to be the best hearing of the night.
Okay.
Tom Bunker, don't disappoint me, alright?
The applicant, Sandwich Road Development LLC, requests to modify a special permit and site plan review for a contractor's yard to increase the height of the metal building, three feet four inches, and correct a small survey error based on Sandwich Road map number seventeen oh one oh three two zero zero zero.
Okay, and I have a motion here.
I'm speaking for that.
Are you going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion, and then we can speak to it, because this is pretty simple. And if you look at your motion, I have made a slight change in it, so that it makes a little bit more sense, okay? I move to approve the motion for modific, I move that we approve the modification to increase the contractor building height by three feet four inches, as well as move property lines as revised, comma, including a condition that the applicant shall install drains and a tight tank in each construction bay.
And Bob, you seconded it then?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I'm glad we don't get paid by the word.
I think Paul wants to make a comment.
Paul?
Just for the record, the Sandwich Road Development was advertised on eight twenty, six twenty-five, twenty-one, and seven two twenty-one, and thirteen of the addresses were notified by regular mail.
Thank you, Paul, I'm sorry, I'm a beginner.
I'm waiving, I'm waiving.
But I misinterpreted it.
Got somebody between us here.
Don't we always read the notices the last time we had this hearing? So do we have to read them every hearing, or just the first time?
Well, this is actually a new hearing, because they modified the plan.
Oh, okay.
It's like modification.
Because it's a special permit, you have to have another hearing.
It's okay.
Okay, I think the rest of our agenda can move almost as quickly.
Rather quickly.
We have planning board discussions, we have already done the affordable housing committee. We're going to discuss now Pam's Way bonus lots. Tom, do you want to speak about that?
Can we take this out of order? We have two people sitting here all night.
Yeah, let's get these guys out of here.
I keep waiting to see what they're doing.
It has to do, must be Louis Neck.
I propose we take this out of order in the interest of time.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Louis Neck.
Alrighty, so, two things on Louis Neck. This afternoon, about six o'clock or so, when I checked my email, we had an email from Troy Wall, who is representing Mr. Fender from Louis Neck Road. I'm going to pass these down to you folks. So, if you would, so what Mr. Wall, who is Mr. Fender's new representative, says, please be advised, I have obtained my real Fender to assist in his development plans. On Mr. Fender's behalf, I request that the planning board take no action on this matter at the evening tonight, other than to continue the matter to any Tuesday in August, except the twenty-fourth. The request is made for two reasons, first, I require a reasonable amount of time to review the matter, second, I have a prior commitment this evening and cannot appear at the hearing. The request to Mr. Wall, Mr. Fender's new counsel. I spoke with Mr. Fender today, we've talked a lot over the last couple of years about this, in what I told, and I say Bill usually, this time of night, sometimes I say Mr. Fender, I get more formal, about, you know, where we're at with this. So where we're at with this right now is that there is a lot on Louis Neck Road that has a note on it that says, not a buildable lot. And the building commissioner, for whatever reason, has issued a building permit for it, based on a set of conditions that we imposed for the determination of access, that we're not clear have been met, based on, do they get to pave this road without the permission of the folks on Carol Ab or not? So in talking with town council, town council has helped me provide this, produce this memo, and the memo, the draft motion, says that the planning board does not find that the conditions of the November tenth, two thousand twenty determination of access have been met, and the town should take no further action on Mr. Fender's behalf, or the Falmouth Housing Trust on Louis Neck Road, until it receives affirmative assurance that the improvements were made in conformance with applicable law. To put that in English, it says, until you can show us you're allowed to do those improvements that you're allowed to do, you haven't met the conditions of the termination of access. And while Mr. Wall would like us to not move on this, we have a building commissioner who's retiring on July nineteenth. We don't have anybody who's been appointed to replace him, and so he's going to be filling in on a couple of days a week. So my concern, as I expressed to Mr. Fender, is we have this highly unusual situation where the building commissioner approved a building permit on a lot that says not a buildable lot. So my advice, and town council's advice, is let's put the brakes on this, and say you haven't met those conditions, so we can instruct the building commissioner to revoke the building permit that's been issued in error. It is not with the prejudice, Mr. Fender can come back at any time, his attorney can come back, in fact, I suggested that his new attorney and I work through the issues to get to this point, and at some time in August or September, when they're ready, we can come back and have the second discussion about this. But right now, we have a building permit that's been issued on a road that is on an unbuildable lot, and the advice of council is, we should go ahead and say, let's not do anything else until we know that the improvements they made are allowed to be improved. That's my recommendation, if the board make that motion, that's town council's recommendation that we do that. And without prejudice, Mr. Fender and Mr. Wall can come back in, in August or September, and talk about how they have complied with the requirements, and we can move on with that.
And we're inclined to take that advice, and I think that John wants to say. John?
I don't see why we need to act on this tonight. Mr. Fender's not moving forward with his building permit, he's not going to do anything. This will have a negative impact on Falmouth Housing Trust, though, if we vote this tonight. And I don't see any reason why we can't wait until Mr. Wall comes in here and makes a presentation to this board. And if Mr. Duffy agrees with us, I'd love to see a note from Mr. Duffy that he's in agreement with this.
Mr. Duffy and I wrote the motion together, I had a more extensive, he said, no, this is, this is what we need. So this memo, this motion has been prepared with town council, that's the recommendation of council.
As I said, Mr. Fender's not moving forward, he's not doing anything, and I don't see the reason to not wait until he has an attorney here to make his presentation.
I do see a reason, I think that it's better to just have a clean start at it. It doesn't really change the situation, as you point out, Mr. Fender's not doing something now. Anyway, we can make a clean start at it in August, and we should hear the motion that was prepared by the town council on Tom.
May I make the motion?
Would you please, and then we can have a discussion.
I move that the planning board does not find that the conditions of the November tenth, two thousand twenty determination of access have been met, and that the town should take no further action on Mr. Fender's behalf, or the Falmouth Housing Trust on Louis Neck Road, until it receives affirmative assurance that the improvements were made in conformance with applicable law.
Could we have a second, and then we can discuss it?
Second.
Thank you, now, discussion.
Yeah, I just have a comment.
Yeah.
I think it's most unfortunate we're in this situation, and I'm very uncomfortable with this, Mr. Fender spent an enormous amount of money to try to resolve an issue for the people in the area there. However, we get advice from council that says we should slow down and get this resolved, and I don't know how we can get past that point by a vote of this board. I think taking a little bit of time to get the new council up to speed, and trying to resolve this, is probably the way to go, because if not, it would present legal difficulties down the road sometime. So as much as I would like to move forward with it, I don't think we have a choice. I think we have to follow the advice of council and town planner, and hold us in abeyance until it can be resolved, hopefully as quickly as possible.
So you're inclined to vote yes on the proposed, on the?
No, I'm in favor of supporting what town council and town planner have done.
That is a yes vote, yes.
And I'm in favor of doing that, I just want to make the statement that it's unfortunate we're in this situation, and I would hope we'd be able to resolve it quickly after this vote, so they can move forward.
I agree with you that it's a very unfortunate situation, it's a terrible situation, but this is where we are. Pam, did you have a comment?
No, I was just going to say, you know, we either adhere to town council's recommendations, because that's what we have them for, or we don't. And this issue came up at, I mean, way back when, a year and a half ago.
Right.
Do we go with our town council, or do we go with some ambiguous, non-definitive resolution, which we didn't do?
Right.
So, you know, I think we just ought to go with town council's recommendation, and see what happens.
I'm uncomfortable thinking that we would always have the town council making the final judgment, when in fact, the board is elected to do that, but I do think. But I do think that our pra-, it's good to underscore that our practice is to take good advice when we hear it.
Well, I, I would, I would prefer either town council come here, which he did once before, over this matter, or send us a note himself. Not, not CC to town council. I want, we keep saying town council said this, I want to see Mr. Duffy say that to us, either in writing or in person. That's how I feel about it.
Bob, do you have a comment?
Other than that, uh, the applicant's, uh, representation is, is asked for this to be continued. I mean, why not, why not grant that?
That's not the motion that's on the floor.
Oh, I know.
You're planning to vote against it. Jim?
I'm abstaining from this whole thing.
Oh, you're back where you were.
I didn't want to go here in the beginning.
Right.
You guys went down this road.
Okay, so everyone has an opinion.
But what troubles me is that a building permit was issued erroneously for a non-buildable lot.
Yes. Are we ready to take a vote? Let's vote. All in favor of the motion as read? Do you want to hear the motion again?
No.
No? Okay, all in favor of the motion as read?
Bob wants to say something.
Oh, I'm, excuse me. I'm sorry, Bob.
I don't represent Mr. Fender. I don't represent the Falmouth Housing Trust. I'm just an observer. What I'm observing doesn't seem right. The only thing that's on the agenda that I see is Fender's Louis Neck update. It seems to me that you're making a decision that has a significant impact on the Falmouth Housing Trust. It's not on the agenda, they've had no notice or opportunity to, to be present here about this, and you're taking action that I think has a, could have a dramatic effect on the Falmouth Housing Trust. And I don't think you have the right to add such a, an action to your agenda. The building permit that's being discussed is not Mr. Fender's building permit, it's the Falmouth Housing Trust. And although I'm not really up to date on everything that's gone on, my understanding is that the lot in question had that restriction removed, in return, provided certain things were done to the road.
If I can provide some clarity, Falmouth Housing Trust has a building permit for their piece of property, and they can build a house on it, right now, tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
A house.
A house.
On it tomorrow. They have a building permit, they're not asking for a building permit, they're not asking for, they're asking for a 40B from somebody else, but Mr. Fender has a building permit issued by the building commissioner for a lot that says not a buildable lot. And that building commissioner is here on a full-time basis until July nineteenth, and I have a great concern that the wheels can come off without a full-time building commissioner here with the building permits already issued, in spite of Mr. Fender's excellent record at following along and doing everything he's supposed to do. My role as the professional is that person who says, what if? And the what if to me, and the what if to town council, is, let's just pump the brakes on this, and when they determine that the road is just fine, he can come back in with a, with a plan that says, I want to remove the note on my lot. Falmouth Housing Trust has a building permit for one house on their lot, and they could build it tomorrow if they wanted.
What about the point that we didn't advertise that we were taking such a vote?
Well, uh, I, I don't know that we advertised that we're taking a vote or not. Uh, there's, you know, we, it's not a hearing, uh, it's essentially a procedural act, we don't have hearings for A and R plans, we don't have hearings for lots of different things. So it's the board's pleasure, uh, and, uh, we've, we've, you know, we've talked about this infinitum for a long time, so...
We have.
Whatever the board's pleasure is at this point. Uh, you, you got a motion and a second on the floor?
Just, just another, uh, I, I, the way I see it, the only thing we should be taking a vote on is to agree to Brian Wall's request.
We wouldn't have to vote, we could just continue.
So vote down your motion, and then vote to, uh, take this up at a future meeting.
So moved.
Well, we have to vote down the motion first.
Right.
I already voted that down.
Right. Let, let's hold on the motion that we've got, uh, in front of us. All in favor of the motion that Pat read? The motion fails. John, you want to make a different motion?
I want, um, Tom bought just made, or town planner just made.
So we'll take this up at a future date.
Right, we're just continuing.
To be determined.
To be determined.
To be determined when Mr. Wall is available.
Yeah.
Um, appointments to the Davis Straits Working Group.
Oh, we got Champsey bonus lots.
Excuse me.
Do we have to vote on this new motion?
Um, it's a continuance.
Continuance, okay.
Well, if you got a motion, second it and vote on it, let's just butt it out.
That makes it cleaner.
Yeah.
Have moved it?
It's, uh, been moved and seconded, yeah.
All in favor of continuing this?
Aye.
Aye, alright, so there we are.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, how much time does Mr. Wall need to get up to speed on this? And, because, you know, this can't linger anymore, it's been going on forever.
Yeah.
And as much as everybody else would like to go away, I would love to have it go away, but I think we ought to expedite trying to get a resolution to this.
He said any Tuesday in August, so that's like...
And that's up to their...
Three, four weeks away.
They're okay with any time in August?
Well, we'll, we'll schedule it when it comes up, you know? Bless you.
Okay. Um, Pam's Way bonus lots. The issue here is, uh, where the funding is going to go.
Well, there is a motion here that covers that.
Will you read the motion?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
I move that the board vote to release Lot Nine and Lot Ten upon receipt of $200,000 per lot paid by Sun Elite LLC to the town of Falmouth, designated to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. The release of covenant shall be held by the town planner until such time as the director of finance verifies receipt of payment, or payments.
Mm-hmm. Second. Second, a discussion?
I think it's fantastic.
It is fantastic.
Yeah.
That's the whole discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Pat, she seconded.
She came back.
Just confusing me, because Pat moved it and Pam seconded.
Yeah.
Oh, why not flip them around?
I've been having trouble with that tonight.
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
It's late.
Appointment to Davis Straits Working Group. Tom, you have a proposal for, oh.
What happened to Melinda?
She died on the screen.
Uh, likely we had a, a data issue, our, uh, technology issue, so she's been on and off the meeting a couple of times during the evening.
We lost Mikayla.
We get, but the lot goes on behind the scenes, even during the meeting. Uh, but chances are, we had a problem with the VPN earlier at her sighting, and then again, so, uh, she's here with you in spirit. Oh, what happens?
Where'd she go?
No, I'm here, I've been listening, I've been taking notes, so...
I was just, I was just making stuff...
...on a later date, Champsey got approved, and, uh, we're ready for Davis Straits Working Group.
She's killing it, killing it over there. Thank you, thank you, Mikayla. It was just your screens dark, and people thought you'd left us.
Oh, no, I, I, I was here, I was getting a drink of water for my...
Can you read that?
No, I've been here taking notes.
Excellent.
This is unfair, she's hydrated, and why not?
It's not that boring. Yeah, so while we're, while we're having this discussion, uh, Mikayla has been at all of our meetings over the last year and fifteen months or so, because we haven't had a full-time planner here. So we will see a lot less of Mikayla in future meetings, because Jed is going to be here for those. Because every time Mikayla comes to a meeting, uh, that's time she's not in the office during the day to get other things done. So as much as we love having her here and how she contributes to things, it's more, uh, it makes more sense and more efficiency for Jed to be here keeping me straight, although they're both at it on a regular basis in the office.
You need two handlers, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think two handlers and a taser, maybe. But, uh, but, so, uh, so, uh, we're going to see less of Mikayla at the meetings.
We will miss Mikayla, but we like all evidence of efficiency we can scrape up.
And I have a very good feeling about Jed, that he's going to come back even tomorrow. He came back on Tuesday.
Good.
Uh, today was a longer day, so I'm hoping to see him tomorrow. He's given me the impression that he...
Tonight, he might not.
He's given me the impression that this is working for him, so, but it's day two. Uh, so, appointment.
Yep.
Appointment.
May I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, I would like to move that we appoint Tony Green to the Davis Straits Working Group.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is really great. We are very, very lucky to have Mr. Green join that committee.
We really are.
Right, is, have any times been set for the committee to get together?
Not yet, I just, I asked Tom that earlier today.
Yeah, so where we're at on that is that, uh, Horstley and Witten has put together their side of the bylaw, uh, they have forwarded to, uh, Union Studio. Union Studio is working on, uh, those, those graphical things that come with the Form-Based Code. So they are in the midst of that, uh, and we hope to have something back by the first of August for the working group to look at. What the chair asked me to do is, when we get something from the working, uh, from Sun, uh, I mean, uh, Union Studio, that the entire board sees it, as well as the working group. So as soon as we have a draft product from them, it'll go out to everybody, the working group will be hammering through it before we bring it to a public presentation.
Have you seen the Horstley and Witten thing?
I have not.
Oh, so, okay. August first, that's soon, good.
The first of August, I think.
Yeah.
That's, that's our, that's our target. Uh, they've got one of their people coming back from his paternity leave, uh, so they're working through, uh, you know, getting to these things, and everybody's busy with stuff. So, you know, we're, I'm very optimistic, uh, that we'll, uh, that we'll be very busy over the summer, if we haven't been busy already tonight.
Right. Are there any committee reports at six of ten?
Better not be.
Apparently not. Right. Are there any announcements?
I, I have one.
Oh.
Uh, we, uh, CHAPA, the Citizens Housing and Planning Association, is having a virtual meeting on Bastille Day, July fourteenth, from one thirty to three thirty. You can zoom in and talk about regional issues in affordable housing, if you would like.
Could you send us an email about that?
You may already have it.
It is, we have it.
I got one today, I saw that.
You, you may already have it, but we'll hit the send key again, because I know you guys go home and read your emails.
Yeah, would you please send it to me, because I had nothing to do when I go home.
Yeah, it was there.
It is Bastille Day.
It's tomorrow, right?
We, yep.
We were in Paris on Bastille Day.
That's fun.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Wait a sec.
Yeah.
Don't you want to hear about, you all had a chance to look at the correspondence earlier, future agenda items, we'll deal with them as they come up. The next meeting is July twenty-seventh. Paul, go ahead with your motion.
I made it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Good night, Mikayla.